Okay, we are live.
Excellent. Okay, this is the June 2020 regular, air quotes, regular meeting of the Fairhaven Zoning Board of Adjustment. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. At the time of the Board's reorganization in January of this year, the Board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice of the schedule of the Board's regular meeting was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press and was also sent to the Two River Times and the Star Ledger. Tonight's meeting was listed in the notice of the schedule of regular meetings. That notice was also posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. In addition, a copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. A notice, a copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public as have requested such information in accordance with the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the Board Secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of the meeting. I will also add that since this meeting is being conducted via Zoom, we had additional notices that did go out with regard to how we would be conducting this regular meeting. Mike, is that sufficient with regard to the additional notice?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we should also indicate that we supplemented our Open Public Meetings Act notice by doing a new Open Public Meeting Act notice for the remainder of the year with each of the regular meeting dates listed in it, where we advised that until further notice, the Board's meetings would be conducted remotely via the Zoom platform. That notice was distributed and posted as required, as with all Open Public Meetings Act notices. We have also required that applicants going forward until further notice include similar information in their individual municipal land use law notices, and also the municipal website has been updated to include the notice materials as well.
Thank you, Michael. Before proceeding with the formal meeting tonight, I'd like to say a few words to the applicants, their experts in the audience about the role and authority of the Fairhaven Zoning Board of Adjustment. The Board is a separate and independent municipal legal entity, and its limited authority is specifically set forth in Borough Ordinances and the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law. It is quasi judicial in nature, and the members of the Board are unpaid volunteers appointed by the mayor and council. The zoning board does not enact the Borough land use laws and regulations; the Borough Council does that. The zoning board does not enforce land use laws of the Borough of Fairhaven. This is the responsibility of the Borough Code Enforcement Officer. This Board deals with appeals for relief from the requirements of the Borough's land use laws or denials by the zoning officer. An applicant is never entitled to a variance, also known as an exception to the zoning regulations, but must meet specific criteria required by the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law and the Fairhaven Ordinances by satisfying certain required standards of proof. The Board has no authority to waive these requirements. The burden of proof is always upon the applicant to show that he or she is entitled to the specific relief requested. The applicant must prove that a deviation from the regulations or advanced the purposes of the ordinance and that the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment to the zone plan. Variants is related to the future use of the land and are not intended or authorized to remedy temporary or unique personal situations. Roll call, please, Jen.
Mr. Nachesny?
Here.
Ms. Quigley?
Unmute. Still, Pat. Lower left, there you go.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Ridgeway? Mr. Ridgeway? Oh, no.
Johnny's present? Can he not hear you?
Mr. Oh.
John, can you hear us?
He just waved.
Happen.
Oh, we can hear you. Mr. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Ludman?
Here.
Dr. Lauffer?
Here.
Mr. Kinsella?
Here.
Mrs. Neff?
Here.
Mr. Leader?
Here. If you'll please join me in standing for the pledge. I pledge allegiance
Allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. My coronavirus 15 pounds are showing when I stand for the pledge, my Lord. Okay. Okay, do we have attendees?
Yes, we do. They've all come on as soon as we went to broadcast, so.
Got it, we just couldn't see them, very good.
Correct.
Okay, so for the benefit of the members of the public who are attending, as well as the applicants that made it here and their professionals, we have had one prior live Zoom meeting. This is our second. In our last meeting, we did not hear any new business. This is going to be our first attempt at actually proceeding with new business. We have invited the applicants this evening to be available to us last month if they wanted to come and ask any questions. I know that there has been some communications with the Board staff, and there have been accommodations made so that everybody is prepared for tonight's meeting to the extent that we can be prepared for how best to conduct ourselves via Zoom. We're going to run this the best we can. We're going to ask for everybody's patience as we flip between members of the public and the applicant, and Board members asking questions and doing what needs to be done. I would ask that everybody please pause before they speak and recognize that other people may have trouble getting in, so we're going to try and just do this at a pace that may be sensitive to the, to the new venue. With regard to matters associated with getting this record clean and clear as far as the applicants are concerned, if we are presented with anything tonight that we're not expecting, we're going to have a conversation with regard to evidence in particular. We've attempted to get the written materials that are going to be part of presentations this evening in advance so that we can put it up on the screen in an orderly fashion. To the extent that anything comes through that we have not yet seen or prepared for, we're going to deal with that the best we can. In the event that there is any concern with regard to the record that we're creating, we will certainly entertain any request by the applicant to carry this meeting to our next meeting so that we can make necessary arrangements to make sure that that information can be communicated in a way that the applicant is satisfied. With regard to the proceeding with business at all, we also invited applicants to carry their matters and not actually present tonight via Zoom. And certainly, we're doing the best we can to accommodate the situation that we find ourselves in, but to the extent that the applicants are not comfortable or satisfied with proceeding under Zoom, we have invited them to carry their matters until we can be live and in person. Wanted to establish all of that. We have two matters of new business tonight. The first is the Delton matter. The second is an appeal by Fairhaven Retail. We have a couple of administrative items which we will do after we move through our new business, and then, as we always do, we will leave time for public comment at the end of the meeting. So without further ado, the first matter on the agenda tonight is the Delton matter.
And I'm going to promote Nicole Delton to panelist. Nicole, let us know if you can hear us once you get in and unmute your phone or laptop. Can you hear us?
We can.
Fantastic. You've got some other folks, I guess, slotted in as attendees for your matter. Do you want them in now? What do you want to call them as you need them?
They can come in now, please.
Come in now.
And that is Doug Cleland, is it?
Yes, please.
Is there anybody else?
No, that's it.
Okay, he should be entered in shortly. And Doug, let us know when you're in.
So, Michael, as we're waiting for Doug to come in, I assume that you're going to swear the applicant and Mr. Cleland. And also, if you could sort of set the stage for the Board with regard to the request, I think we might have gotten a letter. Just help us understand before we start, you know, what we're being asked to look at tonight.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and we should probably begin by noting that the notice materials were provided. They appear to be in order. I didn't see any deficiencies, and I thank Jen for providing those and checking the certified mailings. Either Jen or Joe, I don't know if you can see any of the interested parties that may be in attendance, but if anyone has any questions or issues or problems with regard to the notice, maybe we could address those at the outset. As I say, everything appears to be in order from my perspective.
Do any attendees have any interest in the notice material?
We have the raise hand feature, right? We didn't mention the raise hand feature. If you're in the audience and you would like to comment, when you're asked to comment, there's a raise hand feature, and that way we can acknowledge you if you would like to speak.
There's nobody who's acknowledged.
All right, thank you, Joe. So hearing no objection, the Board has jurisdiction to hear and consider the matter. But we don't forget, we're going to swear on Ms. Gable, our professional planner. You're going to raise your right, your right hand, the other right. You do swear in testimony to give this board a bit of truth, all truth and enough but truth, help you God.
I do.
Okay, Ms. Gable's been sworn. Now, we have Mr. Mark Delton and Mrs. Nicole Delton, right?
Yes.
Would you just raise your right hand, please? We're going to swear you in. You do swear in testimony to give this board a bit of truth, all truth and enough but truth, help you God.
I do.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Doug Cleland, P.E., I'm going to swear in. You do swear in testimony to give this board a bit of truth, all truth and enough but truth, help you God.
Yes, I do.
Okay, why does mine look like it's my left hand? It's actually my right hand. Do I have my mirror image on?
The mirror.
It's a mirror. Okay, for the record, it's actually my right hand. Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, the Board members may recall that there was a prior application on the Delton matter for Henderson Place, Block 46, Lot 14, with regard to demolition of an existing dwelling and construction of a new dwelling in its place. The Board granted a number of items of bulk variance relief, and among those items were side yard setback. There was a approval and a variance granted for the east side yard setback of seven feet where 10 feet is required, and also for total combined side yard setbacks of 18.6 feet where 24 feet is required. The applicant obtained its approvals, among others, submitted, as I understand it, for post-approval compliance review and permits, and there was an issue when the foundation location survey was reviewed. A, a set, a landing and related steps with regard to a small mudroom on the side of the house either was not adequately shown on the initial set of plans or was shown, but it wasn't called out as creating additional variance relief. So as I understand it, as a result of that landing and steps for the mudroom, which is on the opposite side, the west side of the property, it has a setback of 10.4 feet, which conforms, but because that setback was 10.4, whereas in the prior plans that were approved, it was 11.6, the actual total combined side yard setbacks as proposed and as shown on that foundation location survey plan are 17.4 feet as opposed to 18.6 feet that was approved. So as a result of that, and because additional variance relief was required for that, the applicants returning to the Board seeking relief for that slightly larger deficiency on total combined side yard setbacks of 17.4 feet where 18.6 feet was previously approved. Is my understanding accurate on that, either Mr. and Mrs. Delton or Mr. Cleland? Do we at least have the overview correct?
Yes, that's accurate.
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, is that, is that sufficient?
Well, just a quick question. Are we being asked to do some sort of interpretation or some sort of a de minimis approval? Or are we actually going to be asked to grant an additional variance for the additional fee?
My, my understanding, Mr. Chairman, is because it's increased variance relief, we're not being asked to do this on an administrative basis where perhaps the variances didn't change, but the plan may be a little bit different as, as opposed to that that was submitted to the Board when the approval was granted. In this case, they actually need additional variance relief because it's short of the variance relief that was approved.
Okay, so, Mr. and Mrs. Delton, what that means is that to the same extent that we established and the Board granted the variances that were originally requested, the same type of proofs need to be made with regard to the delta between what was previously approved and what is actually shown on your plans and I assume has been installed, given your level of completion. You follow me in terms of what we need to establish? Not, not really. Okay. Well, let's do this. Why don't you guys tell us, and I'm sure Doug's going to help, tell us what's occurred. Tell us about the nature of the area where you have the deviation, and then we will ask, you know, if anybody has any questions, Michael, help us make sure we know where we are, and we'll, we'll then, we'll get through this. Okay, so the, the area is on the driveway side of the property. It's a steps going up into a landing to a mudroom, and it's, I believe, the, the area is like three feet by six inches, and it goes right into a mudroom area off of the driveway. And that kind of jets out, like I said, a little further than the 11.6. It's actually 10.4, six, or whatever Mr. Irene said. Has anything changed, Mr. Delton, from the plans that you originally submitted to the Board that were reviewed and discussed at length back in 2019? No, nothing has changed. So this was the original design? We're just talking about something that was missed on the plans? Yes.
Correct.
It appears, Mr. Chairman, that, that when the plans were submitted and they did all the calculations, they, they simply missed the bump out. It wasn't apparent on the plan when we looked at it. There were a lot of overlapping lines, so that little bump out, if it was added into the calculations, would have shown total combined side yard setback of 17.4 as opposed to what was approved at 18.6. That side of the house on the west side conforms even with the bump out to the single side yard setback.
In the area that we're talking about, guys, where you're actually projecting for this additional amount of inches, this is just a platform. It's effectively a landing when you're going into the house. There's no roof above it, no columns, no structure, 36 inches or something off the ground?
Just a few steps to go into the side door.
Okay.
I also have an exhibit prepared, if that helps, to kind of explain the whole situation and what transpired.
And if you would, if you would, Mr. Cleland, before you do that, let's just take a moment and go through your professional credentials, please.
Sure. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Doug Cleland. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I've been working in the design and citing of various land use projects throughout New Jersey for the last seven years. I have not appeared before this Board before. I have appeared before about 15 other planning and zoning boards throughout New Jersey, and also have the pleasure of serving as the Planning and Zoning Board Engineer for a municipality in Monmouth County.
How long have you been licensed in New Jersey, Mr. Cleland?
Since 2016, and my license is in good standing.
Are you self-employed or you employed by a firm?
I work for Insight Engineering, who prepared the plans.
Mr. Chairman, I assume will accept Mr. Cleland's credential?
Any objections? Sounds good.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Cleland, before you, you submit your exhibit, perhaps we should just take a moment and mark what was submitted with the application. It may be one of the things you want to pull up, but at least this way we know what we're referring to. There was a foundation location survey plan prepared by Justin, middle initial J, Hedges, H-E-D-G-E-S, PLS, of Insight Surveying LLC, consisting of one sheet dated January 29, 2020. And Jen, can we mark that as A-1, please? And there was a revised Sheet 1 of the plot plan prepared by Jason, middle initial L, Fichter, F-I-C-H-T-E-R-P period E period, of Insight Engineering. It's dated May 15, 2019. I couldn't find any revision date on that, Mr. Cleland. Maybe you can help us with that later if there is one. I, I didn't see it. And it also, it shows the new combined total side yard setback as 17.4 feet. And lastly, there were revised sheets, Z as in zebra, Z-1 and Z-2, of the floor plans and elevations prepared by Anthony, middle initial M, Condouris, C-O-N-D-O-U-R-I-S-A-I-A. Those plans were dated February 4, 2019. Again, I see no revision date, and they, they highlight the mudroom on the structure. So that would be A-1, A-2, and A-3, Jen, please.
Yep, so essentially what I'll be referring to is the combination of all three of those exhibits that you referenced. I have them combined into one file, and I believe I did provide that to Jennifer before the meeting, so she should have a copy of it. I guess at this time, should I share my screen? Do I have that ability?
Yes, you do, Doug. And if you want to just clarify in the title block of that site plan, there is a revision date that seems to be masked by one of your notations. I don't know if you have it. Just for the record, you might want to give that to Mr. Irene.
Yes, I can get that for you.
And you should have the ability to share a screen.
Okay, it was revision number two dated 11/25/19 for resolution compliance.
And that's the revised Sheet 1 of the plot plan prepared by Mr. Fichter?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, let's try this. So can everyone see my screen?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, I will zoom in a little bit, just to make it a little clearer. So first, as was mentioned, there's a red box with an arrow pointing to the area in question. This is the, the small entry stair. It's actually the side entry which leads into the mudroom, and that's the area that is the topic of tonight's hearing. Over on the left, the right-hand side, just a few red boxes pointing to the previously approved zoning compliance chart. You'll note that 7.0 was the variance granted for minimum side yard setback, whereas 10 was required for single side yard setback, and the combined side yard setback granted was 18.6, whereas required is 24 feet. So just something worth noting that the single side yard setback, after factoring in the new distance from the very edge of the landing to the property line, is 10.4, which is still compliant for a single side yard setback. But now, as was previously mentioned, the combined side yard setback will be 17.4 feet, so it's an increase of 1.2 feet into the side yard, which was compared to what was previously approved. I'm going to go down to the next sheet, which is the architectural plans. Same ones as mentioned earlier. It highlights the area in question on the architectural plans. I hope everyone can see. If you can't, let me know. I can shift things around. This just kind of explains, you know, where the, where the error came from. You know, ultimately, there was an error on the plans. You know, so typically, you know, we dimension setbacks to things with a foundation, and in this particular case, it wasn't immediately evident that the landing would have a foundation wall. So the double line typically represents the foundation wall, and the green box or the green rectangle is the area in question, which I've highlighted to be approximately eight square feet. And as was mentioned, it's, it's roughly between two and two and a half feet off the ground. Also does not have any type of covering over the top of it. It is open to the air. And I'm going to go down to the next sheet, which is just the architectural plans continued. And this red box just basically points out the fact that the landing was shown and always has been on the approved plans. However, the dimensioning to the landing was not shown, so that's where the discrepancy came about. So I'm going to go down to the final sheet, which kind of explains how all of this happened. So I did personally work on these plans and prepare these exhibits as well, and these are actually snippets from the AutoCAD for this particular project. It's kind of hard to see, but if I zoom in, you might be able to see it. There is a purple line which represents the limit of that landing that's in question, and that landing was built as shown on these approved plans. You'll notice that there's a double line with a thicker gray dash line running through the middle of it. That's the pipe for the stormwater roof leader collection system, and it's actually obscuring the, the leading edge of that landing, so it was difficult to see on the plans. So this is the exact same drawing with the drainage pipe removed, and it's clear that the landing is much, is much easier to see now. So in summary, the proposed entry stair and landing were, were always shown on the approved plans. However, it was visually in conflict with the proposed drainage pipe. The closest point of the proposed foundation wall was used in the measurement of the side yard and combined side yard setback. When the landing is included in the side yard setback measurement, it remains conforming at more than 10 feet for the single side yard. However, the combined side yard becomes 17.4 feet, whereas approval was for 18.6 feet. The landing is unroofed and encroaches beyond the approved side yard by 1.2 feet and approximately eight square feet. You know, I would just like to add that as far as justification for the, for the variance, the existing lot width is non-conforming for the zone that it's in. So the lot is exceptionally narrow, and that was talked about and discussed at length in the original, in the original application for this project. I did not attend that, but Jason Fichter, who is the owner of Insight, actually did and provided the testimony, as well as a professional planner, James Higgins. So because of the exceptionally narrow lot and to be able to provide a house that's, yeah, reading through the resolution, there was a lot of discussion about, you know, if the house is too narrow, it kind of gives the look of a, like a railroad car effect. And, you know, in order to provide a, a nice looking home, the home's 31 feet wide, and the land, you know, so the landing was essentially, everything was built according to the approved plans. It was just a matter of, you know, not properly dimensioning it. It was always there, but it was, it was hidden and not, not noted properly in the zoning chart. So with that, I'll open it up for any questions you guys might have.
Mr. Chairman, just, just so the Board is clear on the numbers that Mr. Cleland mentioned in terms of the lot, it is undersized at 7,370 square feet, 7,370 square feet, where 10,000 square feet is required, and it's short on its width and frontage, 50 feet existing and 75 feet otherwise required in the zone. So that was, that was part of the basis for the Board granting the approvals last time along.
So, Mr. It's, it's McClellan, right? I'm having trouble getting back to my, my view, my correct view. Query as to the size of the landing as it, as it is built. What is the typical size of a landing? What is the size of this? Are there any safety issues relating to, you know, the, the size of an area for, for this purpose?
Sure, so it's, it's at the minimum size allowable by, by building code, you know, to allow for an entry door at the top of the, at the top of the stairs there. It's not exceptionally large. It's, it's as, as small as allowed to be.
So the width is, what's the total width when you get up to the door?
I believe it is four feet wide.
For a 36-inch entry door?
I don't know the exact width of the entry door. I don't know the exact width of the entry door.
It is, yes.
Okay. So this, and there are safety issues associated with making sure that it's adequate for people to be able to get into the house without, you know, whatever, injury?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So I have completely lost my ability to see everybody's.
I'm going to stop sharing, that might help.
Might. Yes, it was you. Very good. Okay, so are there any board members that have any questions with regard to the request? I'm seeing none. Is there anything further that you'd like to present to the board with regard to the request tonight?
Uh, no. That's it.
I have a comment.
Yes, I'm going to go.
So I'm looking at the architectural drawings and the architectural plan that you just had up, it looked like it showed that the cellar raised from the ground. And I'm looking at a set of architectural drawings that I believe he reviewed these as part of our resolution compliance report. And it's only showing one, two, three steps up to the landing on that side, and then I guess another step up to the house. Is is what you showed on those revised drawings different than what I'm looking at?
Yeah, I would definitely look at our drawings for the number of stairs. So a lot of times when we receive architects' plans, they have their idea of, you know, how the grading is going to work. And then and then it's up to us to get, you know, to add the proper amount of stairs on our plans. So we actually show one, two, three, four risers on our plans, which which is accurate.
And is this affecting the building height at all?
Uh, no.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that wasn't another, something else that we missed. All right, thanks.
So just, I just want to make sure that we have that clear, because that has been an issue in the past. I guess, Mr. McClellan, as I'm understanding your point, you get an architectural plan. It shows theoretically how many steps it's going to take. You guys are actually doing the grading and the engineering associated, so you're adjusting that. The plans that you've shown tonight are the same plans that were shown to the board back when the original approval was granted, correct?
That is correct, yes.
So four steps are what's built in the field today. Four steps are on the plans that you just showed us, and four steps were on the plans back in nineteen when we approved it.
That is correct, yes.
We we had, I'm just curious about this, we had talked about the basement back when the house was originally presented. Did the basement plans change and did the grade of the house change in any way in conjunction with that basement issue?
No, not at all. So we were able to make the basement work with providing enough separation from the seasonal high groundwater and still having a fully compliant and leave leaving the building height exactly as it was approved. So that all ended up working out, yes.
Great. Okay, any other board members have any questions, any other questions? Okay, we're going to open it up to the public. Are there any members of the public that have any questions for the applicant or would like or perhaps they would like to make any comments with regard to the matter for the board?
I'm seeing any takers at the moment.
We're looking for a raised hand feature.
None.
Okay, back to the board. We're we're done with the testimony. So is there any board discussion with regard to the matter at hand? Anybody want to make a motion?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
I just wanted to say, in summary, I mean, I think if it was on the plan, if we'd been presented with this at the time of the of the original discussion, I don't I don't see why we would not have, you know, factored it in. And I think it's a de minimis exacerbation. And, you know, I think we would have treated this exactly like we treated the seventeen point four combined yard setback back in two thousand nineteen.
Anyone else have any comments?
I agree, I mean, it seems very small, it's, you know, it's a really small spot that is pulling out a little bit. And I don't think it's material relative to the plans.
And the fact that the side that it's on still complies with side yard setback, I think, is important as well.
Agreed.
I I think I think all that's true. I just want to compliment the applicants and Mr. Cleland for presenting it tonight the way that they did. Because I think you were very straightforward about the fact that it was an oversight. I think it doesn't always feel that way when there are such things that are done. But I feel as though you've been very transparent about it. And I totally agree, if this were picked up at the time, especially given the fact that that side already complied, I think this wouldn't have been an issue. So I'll I'll make a motion unless there's further discussion to approve the the additional variance on the Del Tin matter.
Second agenda.
Mr. Nocesny?
Second, oh, yes.
Ms. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgeway?
We saw the movement of yes, but we didn't hear that. She may be having a microphone issue.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Ludman? Mr. Ludman?
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Leader?
Yes. Thank you very much, good luck, house looks beautiful.
Thank you, thanks so much.
Thank you all very much.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay. Anybody have anything before we move on to the next matter and new business? Okay, the next matter is the Fairhaven retail matter. This is an appeal of a decision from the zoning officer.
Okay, I'm going to bring in Mike Bruno, the attorney, bring in Adam Garcia to start, and we'll see who else they'd like to bring in. Gentlemen, just let us know when you're on, so we can hear and see you. Mike, I see you.
So, can you see me? It's Mike Bruno.
We can hear you as well. Adam, we see you up, but no video.
Hey, while we're doing this, John Ridgeway, can you please do a mic test?
John, say something.
How about now?
Yeah, Adam, you're good.
Adam, we can hear you.
All right, great.
John, I think I heard you, go ahead.
John, did you press join audio? Did you make sure you pressed join audio?
It was fine, something happened.
We can hear you.
I think it may.
You're intermittent, you're on now, so.
It may be your distant microphone, we can certainly certainly see you, if you want to speak, just try and leave forward. Okay?
Is he?
Mike, Mike Bruno, we're getting a lot of feedback on your microphone.
Might lower your microphone volume.
You asked a question, I'm not sure what you asked.
Just ask if Nick Graviano's in.
We can add him in.
Who do we want to add in?
I'll promote him, Joe.
Nick, Nick Graviano. Anyone else having trouble hearing Michael on his microphone?
Yes.
It's very muffled.
Very difficult.
Nope, not working there.
Not going to work.
Yeah, Michael, that's 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 going to be difficult. We can hear you, it's a matter of feedback, give us a couple of sentences. Pretty bad.
It's not good.
Adam, can you do a mic check?
Can everybody hear me?
Yeah, you're good. Nick, you want to do a mic check?
Yes. Graviano.
Good.
Nick Porczynski as well.
Got you, Nick. Mike Bruno, are you making micro adjustments over there, you want to try again?
Maybe you want to try to call in by phone.
Yeah, remove the headset and because you got a microphone on your headset, you might try removing that and just try using the mic on your PC or laptop. Nope, we get nothing. John, you might want to mute something, John.
Dialed in.
Oh, perfect.
That's interesting.
Put on speaker, Mike, if you want, and see if it's, this way you don't have to keep your hands free, try it. As long as your audio is off the PC, you'll be fine. Give us a test.
Okay, can you hear me now without feedback?
Yeah. Now we're getting an echo, so you might want to kill the microphone on your computer.
Turn the audio off on the PC. Actually, I can mute you here, okay.
Try again, Michael.
How is that any better?
Yeah, much better, thank you.
Perfect. Okay. Michael Irene?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is the Fairhaven Retail LLC appeal. The notice materials were submitted, they appear to be in order. Once again, we're just going to check to see, does anybody have any issues, questions, problems with regard to the notice materials on this appeal?
No attendees are indicating any affirmative.
All right, so the board has jurisdiction to hear and consider the matter. And if I may, Mr. Chairman, just a few housekeeping matters. First, we're going to swear him as Gable, our professional planner. You do swear and testimony against the board to be truthful, truth to God. And again, I apologize, my video seems to be mirrored, that is my right hand.
But it's showing up as your right hand on.
It is, okay, on mine, it looks like it's mirrored. Now, with regard to the nature of the application, Mr. Bruno, this one's going to you and Mr. Garcia. The appeal materials indicate an appeal and an interpretation, but from our prior communications and your correspondence to the board in February, I understand this is an appeal alone. Is that correct?
Yes, we're we're appealing your zoning officer, zoning officer's determination that the matter must go in front of your planning board.
Understood, solely an appeal. With regard to the I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Bruno, I'm going to cut you off.
Solely an appeal.
Solely an appeal, thank you. With regard to the timeliness of the appeal, the matter was listed on a prior board agenda, we didn't reach it. And I think Mr. Garcia and I had a brief conversation after the meeting, because the materials I looked at seemed to be stamped in on January fifteen, two thousand and twenty, twenty-day timeframe to file the appeal from the zoning determination on December twenty, two thousand and nineteen. Would have been January nine, two thousand and twenty, but I understand from speaking to Mr. Garcia that there was a set that was timely filed on January nine, two thousand and twenty, is that right, Mr. Garcia?
Yes, that's correct. Mr. Irene, I recall that before the meeting, I handed you a copy showing that it was received on the ninth. So I think it should be in your file.
Okay, I I don't remember, you may well have, but you have a copy, so it's not an issue?
Not not an issue, I mean, we can, we can provide it again, I don't have it, I didn't submit it as an exhibit, but we do have it.
Okay, well, my recollection is that evening, you certainly did tell me that you had a copy filed, stamp filed on January nine. If you provided it to me, I'll look at my file, but I do remember we had that conversation. Okay, Mr. Chairman, that's what I have on the housekeeping matters.
All right, so for the benefit of the board, what we have is something we don't see a lot of, but this is an appeal of the determination by Mr. Porczynski that the application for a restaurant at the Fairhaven retail site did not qualify as an exempt development. What I'd like to do is, in order to create some structure around the conversation, I'd like if Mr. Porczynski could start by explaining the actions that were taken that have led to the appeal. So specifically, Nick, I'd like you to explain what led to the denial letter and the analysis that you put in. And then once you've gone through how that essentially occurred, then we'll turn it over to to the appellant.
Sure, no problem, good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Nick Porczynski, I'm the zoning officer for Fairhaven.
And Mr. Porczynski, I'm going to swear in, you raise your right hand, you do swear and testimony against the board to be truthful, truth to God.
I do.
Thank you.
So again, I'm the zoning officer for for Fairhaven, I work in the zoning department here. I've been here for the past seven years. We received a, an application from Fairhaven Retail. Again, the zoning department is a clearinghouse of land use development applications. The process requires that an application submission be submitted, it's reviewed administratively for compliance with the Fairhaven Borough Land Use Regulations as outlined in chapter thirty of the Municipal Code. In this case, the applicant submitted actually multiple zoning permit applications. The applications were reviewed and determined not to satisfy the regulations and therefore were administratively denied and required to submit a new application to the planning board for further review. And subsequently, like was discussed, the applicant filed an appeal to the zoning board, which brings us today. I plan to go through and discuss the application documents and the timeline of events. I'm going to summarize the zoning documents review that was taken. I'm going to go over the zoning analysis as well as discuss the denial letter and recap on the appeal. So as part of the application documents to establish a timeline, Fairhaven Zoning Department receives multiple zoning permit applications for tenant D located at the existing shopping center at five ninety-eight River Road, which is block thirty-two, lot two in the B one zone district. The application, zoning permit application number nineteen dash one nine four was initially logged in on September third, two thousand and nineteen. The application included a zoning permit with the appropriate free. It included proposed architectural plans, which was entitled Over Easy Kitchen, tenant fit out at five ninety-eight River Road, Fairhaven, New Jersey, prepared by Mode, Monmouth Ocean Design Expert. It was unsigned and not sealed by Daniel M. Con Condatary, a registered architect. Plans were dated August twenty-six, two thousand and nineteen, and consisted of multiple sheets labeled A zero 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 through A four oh one and were stamped for issued for permit. In addition, a site plan was included. It was the site plan that was entitled Site Plan Issued for Construction for Fairhaven Retail LLC, which had proposed site improvements, sheet five of sixteen. It was sealed, signed and sealed by Robert Ford P.E., originally dated twelve nine, two thousand and sixteen, and revised through September fourth, two thousand and nineteen, with a revision comment of revisions per borough. The application itself identified the zoning permit as a what the type of application, the scope of work that was being proposed as commercial interior, interior remodeling, and a commencement change of use application. The applicant's architectural plan stated that the new proposed use will occupy The applicant's architectural plan stated that the new proposed use will occupy tenant D space of the existing Acme Shopping Center. And the proposed use was a restaurant named "Over Easy Kitchen", with a floor area of 2,468 square feet and a seating of 64 persons, which was previously occupied by the Bike Haven Retail Store. The applicant identified on the application itself, under number 4 of the form, the present approved zoning use of the property as none and the proposed zoning use as restaurant. And number 7 of the application, where the application asked to describe in detail the activity or activities to be conducted in all structures on the property and state whether the activities described were conducted as non-conforming use or non-conforming condition exists, the applicant specified a restaurant fit out. His only permanent application was denied, was issued on September 17, 2019, and it stated basically that as presented, the application was not found, was found not to comply with the exempt development classification and regulations and therefore required additional planning board review and approval. So subsequently to that September 17 denial, the applicant submitted another application, zoning permit application, which was logged in as 19-229. That application also stated that it had no changes, but it was accompanied by a letter from Mode's architect, Daniel M. Condory, with a brief description stating that the revised operation for "Over Easy Kitchen" would also expand into the Nicholas Creamery and it would increase the operation to 3,400 square feet instead of the 2,400 and a new seating capacity of 94. Now, that application was also denied by my office and subsequently, a new zoning permit application was submitted on December 13, logged in as 19-277. And that application resubmitted architectural plans revised through 12/10/2019 that went back to the original scope of work, which was the "Over Easy Kitchen" in tenant D space only and the space that was previously occupied by Fairhaven Retail Store, Beer Haven, the bike store, and was composed of 2,468 square feet and 64 persons and had a primary entrance for the proposed restaurant, which was facing the River Road parking lot and a secondary entrance in the rear that was facing the rear parking lot. And that was the zoning permit application denial that was issued on December 20, 2019. That was part of the documents that was submitted into evidence to the zoning board members. So the next step was the zoning document review. So we reviewed the limited information that was provided for, as part of this new use and application. I'm going to try to share a copy of the cover sheet. Let me try to open that up.
Mr. Bruno submitted a package of materials. Are they in there, Mr. Porczynski? Do you know if you want to just mark that one package, or do you have your own?
It's the same exact exhibit or the same exact, it's just, instead of having all the PDFs, it was just the cover sheet, A00.
Alright, thank you.
So again, A00 is the cover sheet that was submitted as part of the zoning permit application. As you can see, it talks about "Over Easy Restaurant Fit Out", it has a floor plan with some building code analysis and talks about the the square footages associated with the floor plan. The next sheet that was part of the document review was Sheet A-101, which was entitled "The Construction Plan", and that construction plan proposed, you know, showed the restaurant floor plan. It showed the primary entrance in the front of the building with the main host area. It showed a secondary entrance in the rear. It showed the main dining area for the 64 seats. It showed a service bar with a beer dispenser, which wasn't too sure where that came in. It showed a kitchen area, two public bathrooms, a sink and wash area, a walk-in cooler for the total square floor area of 2,468 square feet. Quickly try to share that one. So this is basically the same thing that the zoning board was provided for in their packets, Sheet A101. And again, I'll just kind of zoom in here, you can see the front entrance over here. The seating for 64 people in the center, the kitchen and restroom areas, and then the rear entrance, secondary entrance in the rear. So after the document review comes the zoning analysis, and the first step of the zoning analysis was to review the use. And again, as I mentioned, the application that was submitted for question number four was not completed as what was the existing approved use of the property, but is known to be a shopping center. And as listed in number five, the proposed zoning use was a restaurant in tenant D space. This site was subject to a planning board application for the amended preliminary final site plan approval for renovations and modernizations of the existing shopping center. We're all aware of that, Resolution Number 17-05, memorialized April 27, 2017. The proposed shopping center was reestablished as a continued permitted use in the B1 Business District. The proposed use of this application was reviewed in the context of this resolution of approval as well as the definition of shopping center where restaurants are permitted use. So it was determined to satisfy step one of the zoning analysis, which stated that, as stated in the application, the proposed zoning use of a restaurant for tenant D space, you know, was allowed. The second step of the zoning analysis was to review the application in the context of land use regulations. And as per the Fairhaven Land Use Regulations, Chapter 30-4 under Procedure and 30-4.1, the approval required, and I quote, it says, "The purposes of this section is to establish the procedure for review and action on applications requiring subdivision, site plan, conditional use, or variance approval. The procedure is intended to provide orderly and expeditious processing of applications. In all zones for all proposed uses, subdivisions, site development, or construction other than exempt development, site plan subdivision approval shall be required prior to the issuance of a development permit or building permit or the commencement of use." So therefore, what does that mean? Means that as part of the zoning permit application review process, we need to determine if there's any changes that would require further review. And more specifically, if the application that was submitted meets the definition of exempt development. And generally speaking, if a zoning permit can be classified as an exempt development, then there's no further action from the planning or zoning board review required. And based on my earlier testimony on the document submission, it was very limited with respect to this zoning permit application and how it should be classified as an exempt development. I'm going to go over the Land Use Regulation, Chapter 30-2.4, definition of an exempt development. And I'm going to just go through the different chapters instead of sharing the ordinance section. It gets pretty long, but basically it says exempt development means that a site plan or subdivision approval shall not be required prior to the issuance of a development permit for the following paragraphs, A through J. Maybe I will share it just so everybody has it in front of them. Bear with me. Okay. Everybody see the definitions here, 30-2 definitions? This comes from the ordinance section. And scroll down to exempt development. Okay, and it's like I said, there's paragraphs A through J, and I'm going to go through A through J. So A is directly related to single-family houses, which is not applicable to this application. Paragraph B says, "Any change of use of land or structure to a use for which the standards of this chapter are the same or less restrictive." Again, this change of use was from a bike shop to a restaurant that had 64 seats. And this restaurant offers bridal, corporate events, special events, and appears to be much more intense in use. It's not a simple change in tendency from a bike shop called Bike Haven to a bike shop called Bike Saras or something in that respect. Paragraph C talks about, it says, "Individual application for accessory mechanical and electrical equipment." Now, obviously with the restaurant, there is additional mechanical and electrical equipment associated with the restaurant. None of that was really outlined in the application that was submitted. Paragraph D talks about signs. There were no signs included in this zoning permit application, however, there was an early pre-construction sign that was put up in the windows, that was a code enforcement issue that was eventually taken down. A paragraph E talks about interior alterations, which do not increase the required number of off-street parking spaces. Obviously, the change of use from a retail to a restaurant may have implications with regard to off-street parking. And as part of this application, there was no parking calculations that were submitted for review for compliance. Paragraph F Paragraph F talks about subdivision and lots being combined is not applicable. A paragraph G talks about the number of employees. No information was provided for review. Paragraph H talks about underground facilities, the construction of, you know, nothing was provided for review. A paragraph I talks about the construction alteration or addition of off-street parking areas, which provide an increase of five or less vehicle spaces. You know, nothing was really submitted based on that, and there was some concern regarding the second entrance in the rear, which was exits to the loading area. And paragraph J, which is the, I guess, the one that's of utmost, I guess, relevance, says, "When the proposed development, change of occupancy, or change of use does not affect or increase circulation, drainage, relationship of buildings to each other, landscaping, buffering, lighting, parking requirements, or any other considerations of site plan review." And again, no information was provided with regard to the parking requirements. Based on Fairhaven Land Use Regulations, Chapter 30-9.2, the improvement standards, the number of spaces for non-residential development are specifically outlined in Exhibit B. And that Exhibit B talks about off-street parking requirements for non-residential uses, including a shopping center. I could share that for you. This is a copy of that section of the ordinance, 30-9.2 Improvement Standards. Paragraph B is the off-street parking. C is the specifics that talks about non-residential developments, that you have to go to Exhibit B, which is at the end of the section. So if you scroll down to the end of the section here. Exhibit B, Guidelines for Off-Street Parking Requirements for Non-Residential Land Uses. You know, they have everything, all the permitted uses that are allowed. You know, shopping center is obviously outlined there as four per thousand gross floor area, and it has specific notes, has four asterisks on it. And if you go to the next page here, the four asterisks specifically say, "If more than 25% of the total floor area is occupied by non-retail use, which has off-street parking requirements greater than those requirements for a shopping center, and the off-street parking for the center shall be the same as the required minimum for the non-retail use, plus the required minimum for the balance of the shopping center area." So again, as part of this zoning permit application and the documents that were submitted, there was no parking calculations, you know, for me to review. But based on, you know, Fairhaven Retail's website, the marketing information, and some basic calculations for the zoning analysis of the retail versus non-retail use, you know, if you take a look and kind of split up the, you know, into those two categories, the non-retail use square footage is made up of four restaurants. It's made up of seed to sprout, you know, the Dunkin' that was approved, "Over Easy Kitchen", Nicholas Creamly. Then you have the other non-retail uses, such as the bank, the wash and fold, the karate, Pilates, you know, personal trainer, and office space. And when you start to add up all those square footages, it appears that the non-retail uses definitely exceed the 25% of the threshold of a shopping center. Therefore, the additional parking spaces are required to meet the Exhibit B regulations for off-street parking. Now, as part of the planning board application and the site plan that was submitted as part of this zoning permit application, the shopping center is known to have, you know, 45,000 square feet, just about a little over. And there's four parking spaces for a thousand gross floor area, and it provides 181 parking spaces. I'm going to quickly share the site plan that was submitted and as part of the exhibit submitted. So this is a copy of the Dynamic Engineering Site Plan with the latest revision as of September 3, 2019, issued for construction that I mentioned before. And I'm going to zoom in to the area where it talks about parking. And this is what was approved by the planning board previously. And it talks about 30-9.2, the ordinance sections that we just discussed. And it talks about what's required, the existing, and what was proposed. Then even in the applicant's site plan itself, it iterates in this paragraph A, the note that I just read regarding the 25% requirement with regard to non-retail and retail and the additional parking that may be required. So the applicant, as part of the initial site plan, recognized that there might be some parking issues, but no parking calculations or any separate information was ever provided as part of the zoning application. This is just another, you know, zoom in that shows the Acme Shopping Center and the highlighted area encircled in red, that retail area. That's the one that's being proposed for the "Over Easy Kitchen Restaurant." So in my denial letter, I definitely talked about that future submissions should include new parking calculations to make sure that they're applicable with the standards and to show compliance and make sure that the off-street requirements take into consideration the 25% threshold. The restaurant standard is definitely a higher threshold, it requires 15 parking spaces per thousand square feet.
Hey, Nick, that's actually the question that's on my mind. Can you just quickly explain, if this were a standalone building and this were regular retail Bike Haven versus a restaurant, what would the parking requirements be for the bike store? And what would the parking requirements be for the restaurant? Recognizing that the shopping center issue complicates it, but just.
The restaurant standard requires 15 parking spaces per thousand square feet and a typical retail. You know, I believe the bike place would be considered a have a parking rate of four per thousand.
So essentially, it's
It would be the same as the shopping center, basically.
So it's four versus 15 per thousand, whatever it is for the 2,400 square feet, but the difference is in that ratio.
Correct. And again, like a bank would also require five per thousand. A personal service type of establishment also requires, you know, five per thousand. There's a specific parking rate for like a studio at one per 200. So that's a little different. But generally speaking, the Exhibit B that I showed has all the parking rates. I can show that again if that helps. Has all the parking rates. I can show that again if that helps. Just to summarize quickly the denial. The, the, as part of the change of use from the retail to the restaurant. You know, the applicant really failed to provide a narrative or detailed description of the land use regulation compliance as required for the zoning permit application. In accordance with the land use definition of exempt development paragraphs A through J. And more specifically, paragraphs B, E, and J, which talk about, you know, parking as, as one of the, the key criterias there. The operational details were not really provided either, and how the change of occupancy or change of use would adversely affect any previously approved site plans. You know, life safety elements and such, and more specifically, I guess that, that second entrance in the rear. Previously, the, the bike store had a retail component where they sold bikes, then they had like a. A service shop in the rear. So the rear entrance was used as a, as a continuous loading area for people bringing in bikes for repairs or just as a secondary entrance. And I wasn't sure the, the architectural plans call out that secondary entrance. And I wasn't sure if that was just going to be used as a service entrance for the, for the restaurant, or if it was intended to. You know, be used for, for people coming in and out with the additional parking of the rear of the building. So that was also part of the, you know, one of the, the issues of concern. That, that generally summarizes the, you know, the zoning permit application and my denial letter.
Thanks a lot. So we're gonna, we're gonna move on to, to Mr. Bruno. I'm sure he has some questions for Nick with regard to what he's just presented. Are there any quick questions that anybody might want to ask before we move on to the, to the appearance? Case with regard to what happened? Any clarifications on what Nick said? I see you, Pat. You're on mute. There you go.
Thank, thank you. Can you hear me now? Um, Nick?
Yes.
Going to that Exhibit B when I was looking at it today. I saw this other little asterisk that I had a question about. It was the note with the two. It says bar restaurant or similar uses shall be calculated separately. Does that have any effect on your analysis of this application?
I'm trying to look up, you're saying in the.
In, in the Exhibit B where you were telling us about the one, the note with the four asterisks.
Correct.
The twenty-five percent base level. Also noticed this other one that, that I'm not, I'm not sure if it.
No, I think that's a reference to, if you have a standalone restaurant that's also a bar. You have to, you have to calculate the demand and parking for each of those uses separately.
You mean like for the bar and then for the restaurant part of the use?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions to Nick before we move over to Mr. Bruno and Mr. Garcia?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just, just to keep the record as neat as possible in the circumstances. Mr. Pachinsky referenced or actually shared up a number of exhibits. It's, it's my understanding, and maybe someone can correct me if I'm wrong, that those were all included in the package that Mr. Bruno submitted. Under his cover letter of June one, two thousand and twenty. And if so, then maybe we'll just mark that package in its entirety. When we, when we get to that point with Mr. Bruno, so we have a record of what Mr. Pachinsky was referring to. But if that's not the case, Mr. Pachinsky, if there's anything that you were referencing that's not included in that packet, then maybe we can mark it separately at this time.
If that's not the case, Mike.
Yeah, the additional stuff that I referenced was the ordinance sections. I just, I pulled out cheat sheets just to show or have it available on the screen.
So the ordinance sections you referenced, I understand that, but the plans that you, that you. Shared onto the screen, are those from Mr. Bruno's exhibit also, or are they separate?
Those are, those are the same exhibits.
I'm not sure about the date of the site plan, though. Jen, are we able to mark those separately? Maybe we'll just mark them each.
Yeah, I don't think, I think the nine-three-nineteen site plan that Nick mentioned, I don't believe that's. In what Mr. Bruno provided us.
Okay, do, do we have, do we have? Some, somewhere posted, or do we have the things that Mr. Pachinsky shared? Maybe we'll just mark them each separately, and if they're duplicates with Mr. Bruno, so be it, but at least that way everything will be complete. So do we want to reference them and we'll mark them as exhibits now?
Sure.
Do you have them, Mr. Pachinsky? Do you, do we have them, Jen?
Nick has, I think the only one that was separate was the, the site plan dated nine thirteen, nine-three-nineteen.
I have the original zoning permit application. So the original zoning permit application is the information that I was discussing. There's no new information that would, than anything that was submitted as part of the, the original application.
Okay, so the only thing that's different from what Mr. Bruno's package contains is the site plan?
I believe the site plan was included in the, in the package. It was just in, in, it was, it was buried in sheet number five. I didn't get an entire submission package. I only got sheet five as part of my zoning review.
Well, the reason I ask is the, the package that Mr. Bruno submitted contains a dynamic engineering site plan for the subject property. But it appears to be revised through and including April sixth, two thousand and seventeen on the cover.
Yeah, I believe that was the package, that entire package was, is what was submitted to the planning board as part of the planning board application. And then subsequently, as part of resolution compliance with the planning board. The, the engineers revised some of the information, and that was what was used for the submission with this zoning permit application for over easy. Which had a revision date of, of September fourth, two thousand and nineteen, revision comment that says revised per borough comments.
Okay, so we're going to mark as Exhibit B dash one, the dynamic engineering site plan for the subject property. Revised through and including September four, two thousand and nineteen, that was submitted in conjunction with the zoning permit application that you referenced, Mr. Pachinsky, is that right?
That's correct.
All right, so we'll mark that as B dash one. When we get to Mr. Bruno and Mr. Garcia's presentation, we'll mark their entire package as well. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
I'm not seeing any more questions. I think we have the housekeeping taken care of. Mr. Bruno, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening. Michael Bruno on behalf of Fairhaven Retail. This is a appeal of Mr. Pachinsky's zoning denial. Little frustrating hearing that testimony from Mr. Pachinsky this evening. Had he indicated as part of his. Denial what he needed to supplement his, the information to make a determination that, that would have been provided to him. Rather, he just denied it and gave us the appeal option to the zoning board or the planning board. So it's quite frustrating to have heard that this evening. With, with that said. Let me explain the concern that we have and, and what the appeal is really about. And we can get into what additional information Mr. Pachinsky may need to make an ultimate determination, but. A, a, as this board knows. The. Fairhaven Shopping Center was the subject of a site plan application in two thousand and seventeen and more recently in two thousand and nineteen. At which time, your planning board granted full site plan approval for the shopping center, which included some upgrades. To the shopping center. The shopping center had been in existence since nineteen forties or nineteen fifties. And was recently upgraded with those improvements completed. So the property is approved as a permitted shopping center. There's two hundred and forty-nine parking spaces provided, where a hundred and eighty is required for a shopping center. The proposed. Over easy restaurant is, is determined to be a permitted. Class one or class A restaurant, which is a sit-down restaurant with waiter service. Primarily serving breakfasts and lunches. They don't, they do not have a dinner service, and that is a fully permitted use in the shopping center. So the frustration by the applicant is that we have a fully permitted site plan and a fully permitted use going into as a new tenant in the shopping center. And there's a denial from Mr. Pachinsky as to that use requiring us to go back in front of the planning board. For amended site plan approval. There is no proposed change to the site plan. There's no proposed change to the building. There's no proposed change to the parking, the circulation, the drainage, the landscaping. The signage package is fully completed. We're simply changing a new, we're simply trying to put a new tenant which is permitted into the shopping center. And certainly, the, the law does not require that every time a tenant is changed in a shopping center that they have to appear before the planning board. Unless there's some change in. One of the requirements for parking, or there's a condition in your approval, the planning board's site plan approval, that is, that would require. A re-evaluation of, 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 of the use if a certain type of use came in, so. We're, we're, we're quite frustrated with, with the testimony tonight. Had we known that Mr. Pachinsky needed more information. We certainly can provide that to him rather than losing all his time and having to appear before you on this appeal. Or the planning board on an amended site plan, which there's no, there's no site planning features that are, that are implicated with this application. It's again, it's just a simple tenant fit out for a new use that's permitted in your, in your shopping center. So. With that said, we'd, we'd like to introduce a, a package of. Exhibits relating to the approvals that have been obtained on the property. And then we, we would like to present our testimony. We have a planner. As to why we don't believe. Planning board approval is required and why we believe we are in exempt development. And we'd like to proceed in that manner. At this time, I'd like to have Adam Garcia, who has the list of our exhibits. Introduce those so we can have those marked into evidence.
Good evening, everyone. I'll just share my screen and then I will go through each of the eight exhibits that we have. So this is Exhibit One. It is a zoning permit denial letter dated September seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen. Revised October sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and last revised December twenty, two thousand and nineteen, which is signed by Nicholas Pachinsky. And it runs three pages. Exhibit two.
So we're going to mark these A one, A two, and so on in sequence, Jen, please.
Exhibit two is a letter from Michael Bruno dated January ninth, two thousand and twenty. Which encloses Fairhaven Retail's application for appeal and statement of facts running fifteen pages. Exhibit three are copies of the zoning permit applications by IBO Construction Group on behalf of Fairhaven Retail. Each dated September third, two thousand and nineteen, October eighth, two thousand and nineteen, and December thirteen, two thousand and nineteen. Each of which are two pages for a total of six pages. Exhibit four is the over easy restaurant fit out plans prepared by Monmouth Ocean Design Experts. Dan, Daniel M. Conditour, RA dated August twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen, and last revised. December ten, two thousand and nineteen, running sixteen sheets in total. Exhibit five is the resolution of the Fairhaven Planning Board granting preliminary and final site plan approval for the shopping center. Which was adopted on April twenty-seven, two thousand and seventeen, running eleven pages. Exhibit six is the resolution of the planning board granting site plan approval for the placement of a monument sign at the shopping center. Which was adopted on May ninth, two thousand and seventeen, running six pages. Exhibit seven is the resolution of the planning board granted, granting amended site plan approval for the Dunkin' Donuts tenancy at the shopping center. Adopted September nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and it's ten pages. And the final exhibit. Is the site plan prepared by Dynamic Engineering, Robert Freud, PE, which is dated December ninth, twenty sixteen, and that runs fifteen sheets.
Is there a revision date on that?
Uh, not on this one that we submitted. This is just the, the original that was submitted in connection with the initial. Site plan application in two thousand and seventeen.
Mr. Garcia, look to the left of the block. You'll see revision dates.
Oh. Sorry, it's sideways.
I believe it's through April sixth, two thousand and seventeen.
Through. To February seventh, two thousand and seventeen.
No, it is the second one.
One more.
Yeah, April sixth, two thousand and seventeen.
Thank you.
And those are, those are all of our exhibits that will be referenced throughout the testimony.
Mr. Bruno, I, I, I think it sounds like there's kind of two components of, of what you're going to present tonight. And before we get too deep into that, can I just ask you a couple of questions on, based on your preliminary comments? The first is that you didn't, you kind of didn't recognize that additional information could be provided, or there was no request to supplement the submittal. I'm just looking at the, the letter from Nick revised twelve-twenty. And in the, on the second page, in the, in the section relating to change in use, it says that. I, I won't read it for you, but it says that the details have not been provided, and then it gives a list. And on the third page, underneath the discussion about the appeal, it says if you desire to amend your application, please submit an amended plan to my office. Are you suggesting that it was unclear that additional information was required or should have been, or could have been submitted for review?
Yes. We're, we're suggesting that it wasn't a change of use, that the use is the shopping center, so clearly it was not a change of use. It was a application for a permitted tenancy in the permitted shopping center. And it was not clear what, what Mr. Pachinsky was concerned about, and his. His letter gave us the option of appealing to the zoning officer. Had he made a request for additional information that he highlighted this evening. We very well may have been able to provide that for him and, and, and gotten around this whole appeal process, so. That was, that was the purpose of my. My opening comment.
Okay, the, the other comment, and then I'll, I'll let you have the floor, but the other comment that you made was that the law doesn't require a site plan on a change of use. I had understood that Mr. Pachinsky essentially outlined in Fairhaven, an ordinance that I think is somewhat common. That a change in use does trigger a site plan but for applications that make qualify under exempt development. Is that not your understanding?
Well, our, our understanding is that the use is the shopping center. We're not changing that. So there's no change of use.
Got it.
The, the change is a change in tenancy with a permitted tenant. So certainly, certainly that provision would be applicable to a building that had a, a particular use in it that was changing that use. And that a borough would be concerned about whether the new use would be. Would, would, would fit within the site plan that was approved for the existing use. But here we have a shopping center. It's fully contemplated that the tenants are going to change. From time to time quite often. And so. The change of use provision is, is, is not applicable in this instance.
So your argument is that as long as a user is permitted pursuant to the ordinance, they should be able to plug and play in the shopping center without any review. Regardless of, of issues that, you know, may relate to intensity or what have you.
Well, I, I, I wouldn't quite say it like that. I, I think our position is that as long as the use is permitted. And it doesn't trigger any new requirements, and Mr. Pachinsky did properly. any new requirements, and Mr. Porczynski did properly point out one requirement that could be triggered, then that's the 25% increase in parking. As long as it doesn't trigger those requirements, then yes, it's our position is if there's no change to the site plan, there's nothing being impacted that's site plan related, then there's nothing to approve by the planning board because the use is permitted and it's already fully approved. So, that would be, that would be our position. So, the, the frustration this evening being, being voiced is that the, the one component that Mr. Porczynski raised this evening as to the 25%, we could have responded to him had he, had he raised that with us and given him the breakdown of the occupancy at the site so we could have determined that we didn't run afoul of that concern, and he could have given us a ruling without going to the planning board.
But isn't that note on one of the plans, Mr. Bruno? Don't you have that, that 25% threshold requirement on one of the plans?
Yeah, and we, we don't, we don't believe we're over the 25%.
But the issue is how could he make the determination on the exempt development ordinance if that information isn't provided to him? This is an appeal, right? We're not, we're not in front of the planning board arguing whether planning board, site plan approval should be granted or not. The, the issue that's before the board is whether or not Mr. Porczynski erred. And if we're looking at the ordinance language that he's read, on a number of the items set forth in the exemption ordinance, particularly the parking calculation, if that information isn't provided, how is it that in any event, he could determine that it was exempt? Wouldn't he be precluded from making that determination?
I, I think, I think the information was provided. We have a site plan approval with all of the parking calculations, and we're not, we're not, we, there was no, at no point did he raise the concern that we were over a threshold that a different parking calculation was required. So, we've had tenants change in that park, in that shopping center multiple times, including Nicholas Creamery. There was no, there was no determination requested. This is, this is a new request, and had we known, had, had he raised the issue with us that the application was deficient as to this item, we could have supplied the information to him. So, it, it, listen, it's, we're at where we're at. We heard his testimony this evening, and I certainly, certainly feel that but for the, the parking requirement, for a permitted, approved shopping center, a change in tenancy where the tenant is permitted and no changes to the site plan are proposed and no new criteria is implicated such as the parking, that no, no planning board relief is required. There's nothing under municipal land use law that would empower the planning board to review an application in that instance. And so, it really lies to the zoning officer. It's the zoning officer's determination to determine whether or not there's a violation. It's not the planning board's determination. It's the zoning officer's. He should have asked the question if that's what he was concerned about.
Wouldn't, wouldn't the ordinance control, Mr. Bruno? My understanding from Mr. Porczynski is that the ordinance provides that if there's a change in use, among other things, site plan review is required unless...
So, again, Mike, Mike, Mr. Irene, there's no change in use. The use is the shopping center.
No, no.
We keep using that terminology, but that's not, that's not what we're changing.
My, my understanding of the ordinance is that a shopping center is a, for lack of a better word, an amalgam or a grouping, an integration of various uses that are permitted. Restaurants, retail uses, banking, offices, those are the uses that are permitted, and the shopping center is defined as an integrated development consisting of those uses that are permitted in the zone. So, even if you swap out a permitted use for a permitted use, under our ordinance, as I understand it, site plan review is required unless, unless the applicant can demonstrate to the zoning officer that the provisions of the exempt development ordinance have been satisfied. So, if, if they haven't been, if those provisions haven't been satisfied, or at least the demonstration wasn't made to the zoning officer, how does he get to exempt development? And you can, you can disagree with the ordinance, but you don't expect this board on an appeal to rewrite the ordinance. We take the ordinance as it's provided, right?
So, so, again, I, I think the, Mr. Porczynski's testimony was not only this evening, but at the prior site plan, that the use of the property is the shopping center. The change in tenancy is whether or not it's exempt, and the interior fit out, we fully, we squarely fall within that exemption. He's raised the concern this evening that we may change the parking calculations. In J, he's raised that concern. Had he raised that as part of his analysis, we could have addressed it before him because he, proper jurisdiction lies with this, Mr. Porczynski to review that issue, not the planning board. And so, he should have asked, he should have either deemed us incomplete because we didn't provide the additional information so he couldn't make a determination, or he should have asked us and had the courtesy of telling us that he needed additional information so we, we could have supplied it.
But doesn't that paragraph on page 2 of his denial say that? "The details have not been provided regarding how the change of occupancy, change of use does not adversely affect previously approved site plan, increased traffic circulation, relationship of buildings buffering, and parking requirements."
But then he, he goes on to say, "Your, your remedy is to appeal."
Well, if you disagree with his determination, you have a right to appeal, or you go back to him, right?
Which is what we did.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. The, the sentence immediately following "you can appeal" says, "If you desire to amend your application, please submit an amended plan to my office." And in fact, the applicant submitted multiple plans. There was a plan in September, and then a plan in November, and then a third plan, and then a third plan in December. So, I think that's there, but let's, let's move beyond that. Mr. Irene, before we go into the other stuff, we've got to get into this change of use thing.
But it, Mr. Lee, it's, it's an important point because had the letter said, "If you, if you supply the following information, I, I will reconsider your application," we could have supplied the additional information.
I, I understand, and I understand you don't like it, and I understand it could be written differently, and I get it. And I just don't think that it's necessary to debate whether or not, you know, it's good enough. Beyond that, the, the change of use issue, with regard to the definition of exempt development, you know, it says change of use, but it says lowercase c, lowercase u, change of use. As a layperson, I think about a change of use as a turnover of a tenant. And it's my understanding that the default position throughout New Jersey is that the change of a tenant requires a site plan approval unless it otherwise provides for an exception. And what I'm struggling with is the argument that because you're a shopping center, that none of the other users matter, that you'll always have the same use regardless of which tenant you put in. I'd like to understand how the ordinances in Fairhaven define a change of use. Is that, is that consistent with the ordinances, your argument about shopping centers?
So, we'll present Nick Graviano, our planner, but essentially, it's our position that the use is a shopping center and the tenancies, as long as they're permitted and you're not changing the site plan or evoking a higher standard such as the one Mr. Porczynski raised this evening, then no further relief is required. There's nothing, there's nothing to give relief on. And, and you, you, I don't think you're suggesting that every time you change a tenant in New Jersey that you have to get a site plan approval because that's certainly not the law, nor is it the law in, in this case. And, and it, I think the question's come down to, are you invoking an additional parking obligation? And that's why he did, Mr. Porczynski did not make, did not issue the zoning permit because he didn't have the answer to that question.
It may be more than that, but that's certainly a threshold. I mean, you look at that, and without that, the question is, how does he go on?
We're, we're having a hearing tonight on this. I, I think it's more than the parking. I think the parking's clear. I'm, I'm interested in the rest of it because I'd like to get a handle on it because you got a shopping center in Fairhaven, and I'd like to understand how we're reading this because it's confusing me to hear that there is no review regardless of what the users are.
If, as long as they're permitted and the shopping center's permitted and you're not changing the site plan, there's no review. What, what, what powers does the planning board have to review that? That change of use if it's permitted and it doesn't invoke site plan or subdivision and there's no variance?
So, so your argument could be that in the, at the end of the day, the planning board can't impose anything on you because it's impractical because of the conditions at the site, but I don't, that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking whether or not the ordinance requires, requires that review. That's all I want to know. And I'm really interested in understanding how we define change of use and whether or not the argument that a shopping center, use within a shopping center is a repetitive shopping center use and does not trip up any requirement to go before the planning. Nick, do you know the answer to the question of how we define?
So, so, why don't you let us put our testimony in, and then we can answer some questions. We jumped up, you know, we jumped into the argument before I was able to build the foundation of the, of the, of the application. I'd like, I'd like to get into that into the record, and then we can go through these questions if it's okay with you.
Absolutely, Mr. Bruno, I'm sorry.
So, this is an appeal of the zoning denial from your zoning officer, Mr. Porczynski, that the proposed over easy restaurant requires a planning board, amended site plan approval from the planning board. The shopping center is owned by Fairhaven Retail LLC, and it received amended site plan approval back in 2017 where the shopping center was substantially renovated and modernized. Subsequent to that, an amended site plan application was submitted for a proposed Dunkin' Donuts tenancy that I'm sure everybody remembers. That was approved in 2019 by the zoning board as to a permitted use and as to the planning board as to an amended site plan yet again for that use. Subsequent to those approvals, the, the shopping center was in fact renovated and is operating in accordance with that amended site plan. The shopping center is now currently active and trying to get the spaces, the vacant spaces occupied, and one of the proposals was to include an over easy restaurant, which is a permitted restaurant in this zone, in place of the former tenant space known as Tenant Delocation, which was operated as the Bike Haven. In September 2019, Fairhaven Retail Professionals submitted a zoning application for the interior and tenant fit out for the over easy restaurant. Other than an internal fit out, as would be necessary for any new tenant, no improvements affecting the site wide site plan were proposed. There was no change in footprint, no drainage changes, no changes with respect to relationship of the buildings, no landscape changes, no lighting changes, no change in parking requirements, and no other change to the site plan was proposed. The borough has historically granted zoning permits for new tenants within the shopping center so long as the tenancy is permitted use as the case is with the over easy restaurant. And mostly, most recently, we note that the zoning permit was issued for Nicholas Creamery within the shopping center. The zoning officer denied the zoning permit for the over easy restaurant on the purported basis that the fit out does not constitute an exempt development and requires yet another site plan review. We respectfully submit that the zoning officer's determination is erroneous for several reasons. First, it conflicts with the municipal land use law scheme established by the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law insofar as the use of the site is a shopping center as the zoning officer has himself acknowledged, which means that the use of the property is not changing. The site plan for the shopping center has already been reviewed and approved by the planning board twice in recent years. Because neither of these approvals contain a condition that the Fairhaven Retail obtain amended approval or reapproval for any tenancy, Fairhaven Retail is entitled to operate with all permitted tenancies such as the over easy, which is a permitted category one restaurant in your, in your zone. Second, as the zoning officer has acknowledged, the only improvements that are being proposed in connection with the over easy tenancy are the building fit out and commercial interior improvements. This does not change any site plan improvements to the shopping center. All site plan improvements were previously approved and are constructed. Third, and perhaps most importantly, in our view, the planning board would not even have jurisdiction to consider yet another amended site plan application merely by virtue of a new tenancy. Municipal land use law confers jurisdiction upon a planning board only to the extent provided in, in the land use law. While certainly a planning board has jurisdiction over site plan applications, as to this site is already reviewed and approved, the site plan, no changes to the approved site plan are proposed, and accordingly, there's no, there's no action for the planning board to take. With respect to the borough's definition of an exempt development, this is the scenario we believe the exempt development would fall under. We will have testimony tonight from our planner, and we'll go through the exempt development definitions and the analysis of, of the over easy tenancy as an exempt development. With, with that, I'd like to introduce our planner, Nicholas Graviano, to be sworn as a, as a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey.
Raise your right hand, Mr. Graviano. You describe testimony, you support it, you truth alter it, number truth up you got.
I do.
Thank you.
Nick, could you give the board the benefit of your credentials and education?
Excuse me, yes. I'm a partner and planner with Graviano and Gillis Architects and Planners, the business address of 101 Crawford's Corner Road in Homedale, New Jersey. I have a master's degree in geography and urban studies from Rutgers University, a master's degree in city and regional planning from Rutgers University, and a law degree from the Temple University School of Law. I've a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I have testified before this board before, as well as numerous municipalities in 16 different counties in the state of New Jersey.
We'll stipulate. Mr. Graviano has been accepted as an expert by this board previously.
Thank you. Mr. Graviano, have you had a chance to review the Acme Shopping Center and the application before the zoning board this evening?
Yes, I have.
Have you had an opportunity to review the zoning denial by Mr. Porczynski and the borough's land use ordinances?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Have you had an opportunity to review whether this application or the zoning officer erred in his denial of the application for interior fit outs for the, for the over easy restaurant?
Yes. Yes, I had a chance to review the, the denial as well as the resolutions from the two previous approvals, as well as the borough zoning code.
And can you describe the borough's land use ordinance with respect to what an exempt development is under the ordinance and whether this, this proposed use would fall under that exemption in your opinion?
Yes, and as Mr. Porczynski outlined in his testimony earlier, the borough does have criteria for exempt, exempt developments, starting with A and ending with J. It goes through various criteria for which a use can be classified as an exempt development.
And which one of those exemptions would you, in your professional opinion, believe that this proposed over easy restaurant would fall under?
I believe it would fall under B. It would also fall under E, and it would fall under J.
And can you describe what, why you believe that to be the case and what the planning testimony would be in support of those positions?
Certainly. To get into some of that analysis, I would like to rehash some of the history of the project. As indicated in your previous introduction, this site has been subject to site plan approvals by the planning board, the first one occurring in April of 2017, where the applicant proposed extensive renovation improvements to the stormwater management system, pedestrian walkways, lighting, landscaping, facade, and signage improvements, along with other improvements on the site. The applicant also received amended site plan approval in 2019. As discussed, that was in relation to the Dunkin' Donuts restaurant. In the resolution, which was dated PB 19-06, page 5 of the resolution recognizes the finding followings of fact. The site of the application is located at 598 River Road with an existing shopping center of approximately 42 acres in the B1 district. Additionally, in number 2, it indicates... Additionally, in number two, it indicates that the property is fully developed with the Fairhaven Shopping Center occupied with tenants. But you have the resolution from the 2019 planning board approval with clearly recognizing that this is indeed a shopping center occupied with tenants. So that, that establishes that the municipality has recognized this as, as a shopping center. Moving on to the actual criteria of exempt development, the first one would be any change of use of land or structure to a use which the standards of this chapter are the same or less restricted. And as you proposed, Mr. Bruno, and I agree with you, the existing use of the property is a shopping center. Consequently, the standards of the chapter are the same. Section 30-2.4 defines the shopping center as an integrated development such uses as retail stores and shops, personal service establishments, professional and business offices, banks, post office, restaurants, auditoriums, houses and enclosed building or buildings utilizing such common facilities as customer parking, pedestrian walkways, truck loading and unloading space, utilities and sanitary facilities, and having a minimum floor area of 20,000 square feet. So this, this property has in excess of 20,000 square feet. So the use is a shopping center. Moving on, letter E, interior alterations, which do not increase the required number of off street parking spaces. And in this circumstance, section E certainly ties in with section J, which stipulates where the proposed development, change of occupancy or change of use does not affect or increase circulation, drainage, relationship of buildings to each other, landscaping, buffering, lighting, parking requirements, or any other considerations from site plan review. So the 2019 amended site plan approval indicates that the board finds that the application will meet the present development of the site and which will allow movement of pedestrian vehicles and traffic. That resolution at no point requires the applicant to go back to the site plan approval for a change in tenancy in the shopping center. Furthermore, the borough code in many instances reinforces the fact that a shopping center is a use and not simply an, an agglomeration of distinct uses because the shopping, the, the borough code itself has a separate requirement for shopping centers. If a shopping center wasn't its own distinct use, the individual parking requirements for each tenant would be applicable. The borough's parking code indicates that the shopping center is a use in its own right.
Is it listed among the permitted uses in non residential zones in the table of schedule of permitted uses? Is there a listing for a shopping center as a specifically separated defined use?
No, there is not. Right, I'd like to also note that the borough code is deficient in, in the definition of many matters, including the fact that there's no definition of a, of a retail store.
I didn't ask you about the definition. There's a definition of a shopping center, and it indicates that it's an integration, an integrated development, and it lists a bunch of other uses. What I asked you is, in table B, schedule of permitted uses in non residential districts, where it lists all the uses, is there a separately listed use shopping center?
No, there is not.
Thank you.
I have a different question. If the analysis of whether or not this is an exempt development includes the intensity of parking, and the regulation specifically says that if a shopping center has in excess of 25%, that is, that requires more than four per thousand throughout the, the balance of the ordinances, don't each one of the tenants that are coming in have a direct effect on the parking requirements? Don't you need to add up each of the tenants? And isn't that essentially the issue?
That's not how it's outlined in the resolution of the site plan approval for this site.
What, what does the site plan have to do with the interpretation of the ordinances as to the new application?
Because section J of the exempt development criteria indicates requirements of any other consideration of site plan review. The site plan review did not put on the obligation of the developer to come back every time there's a change in tenancy in the shopping center.
But if that's required under the exempt development ordinances, the planning board would have no authority to waive that going forward. They can't usurp the authority of the governing body and essentially omit that ordinance provision, can they?
Well, the, the site was subject to two separate site plan approvals. Neither of them made the requirement to change tenants in, in. Furthermore, you have an established pattern in the borough where Nicholas Creamery, which was a category two restaurant taking the place of a retail store, was not required to get site plan approval by the planning board.
So the appellant's position is that going forward, anytime there's a change of use, that exempt development ordinance provision should just be ignored? We're just supposed to delete it?
No, that's not, that's not the applicant's position. The applicant's position is that it receives site plan approval on, on two occasions, either of which required the applicant to come back when there's a change in tenant in the shopping center.
And that affects this application, which is different how?
Because it's a change in tenancy for permitted use in the shopping center, which has already received site plan approval.
But isn't the proposal different than what was at issue in that site plan? There's, there's different uses now.
There are always different uses in a shopping center. That's the nature of a, of a shopping center.
And doesn't the ordinance provide that when they change, at the very least, the parking calculation has to be made so that the zoning officer can determine whether or not it's an exempt development?
In certain conditions, yes.
Is this one of those conditions?
The applicant at the time did the calculation and did not feel that they met the threshold for the increased parking requirement.
Did they submit the calculation to the zoning officer as part of a zoning permit application?
No, they did not.
Doesn't the ordinance require that?
Mr. Irene, I, I, I think with every application this applicant has submitted, that was not a requirement.
I think my question was whether the, whether the ordinance requires it.
Can I finish, please? Can I finish? If it's a requirement, it should have been told to the applicant. And it could have been provided.
Well, again, I think that the zoning permit denial speaks for itself, but, but I'm going to assume then that the answer is yes, the ordinance requires it.
Well, I, I don't know what you're assuming, but if, if, if your zoning officer required that calculation, he should have told us, we would have provided it.
I just.
We, 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 as I open with, we don't believe that your ordinance allows you, allows the borough to send each new tenant to the planning board for a determination if it's a permitted use.
Then aren't you in the wrong form? Shouldn't you be challenging the ordinance? Name the governing body and attack the validity of the ordinance?
Well, you, you've got, you've got steps you have to take, as you well know. The first is to appeal to this zoning board.
But, but the appeal is the issue of whether or not the zoning officer was in error. It's not, the appeal is not for this, this body to review the ordinances and decide if we think they're appropriate or not. That argument has to be made to the governing body of the Superior Court. We, we have no authority to change the ordinance. We take the ordinance the way it exists.
This is the first time this evening that we're hearing from Mr. Porczynski that the reason he denied the application was because of the parking issue. We hadn't heard that before. His letter, his letter did not provide that.
Well, the letter will speak for itself, and, and I would, his testimony also speaks for itself, because it sounded to me like it was more than that. But the issue of the parking seemed to be, at least in my mind, pretty easy. If it wasn't submitted, it wasn't submitted.
May I ask a question? Because I hate to belabor this point, but we keep coming back to it, that there wasn't really notice given that the parking information was relevant. And we looked at the 2020, or sorry, the December 2019 letter, which, as we've said, speaks for itself, seems pretty clear, that information wasn't provided. It also seems this is the third version of that letter, the, the third denial that was offered. And this language, as I recall, is kind of form boilerplate language for denial. So I'm curious if the earlier two letters raised the point about parking information being required. Do we know, and maybe Mr. Porczynski can answer that?
Yeah, the other two denial letters had similar language regarding, you know, parking being one of the issues with regard to additional site plan review.
Okay, so if, if that's the case, I'm really challenged to understand why the applicant feels there wasn't adequate notice given about the lack of parking information.
Well, the applicant didn't believe that they violated any, any, any parking criteria that would, would require any relief. And had, had it been known to them that the concern was that a, a parking was an issue, you, 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 you must appreciate that the, that the shopping center parking requirements is 180, and there's 249 proposed. So the site is way overparked based on your criteria. And based on the, the, the current makeup of the, of the shopping center, they did not believe they violated the 25% which would require a new calculation, nor had anybody asked for that calculation. So if there was a miscommunication, that, that's possible. But this, you know, we, we've had other applications, and that information wasn't provided historically. So if this is the first time it's, it's required, we've, we've learned our lesson. But this is the first time it's been required as part of a zoning application that I'm, I'm aware of. And it simply could have been asked for, and it could have been provided, and we could have avoided this whole appeal process.
Look, I, I just want to clarify, because I've been working with Mr. Porczynski for all of his seven years, and a lot of residents, and a lot of applicants. And I know that our building department is, is always available. And I'm not quite sure what happened. No one would know but for the people who are communicating. But I, I think the suggestion that the burden should be on Nick to put forth what he needs, I'm sure he was available. But I want to get to something else. The, the argument is being made that the planning board approvals, because it does not include an express requirement that future users go back for a new site plan, that that means that those approvals were intended to grant blanket approval regardless of who the new users are? I understand the absence of the language saying that they don't have to come back. Is there language somewhere that says that the users are all permitted as long as they're permitted within the zone?
Were you, you asking the planner, or are you, you asking me?
Either one of you. I just, I want to know if it's in text. The arguments that you're making tonight about shopping center are really significant things for us to discuss. And, and if the argument is that the planning board knowingly granted blanket approval for users to come and go in this shopping center through those resolutions because there's an absence of a requirement that they come back, then I'm asking you if there's specific language that says what you're asserting they need.
Well, I, I, I think, I think the municipal land use law is, is pretty clear that the planning board has jurisdiction here, applications on a site plan and subdivision and variance. So unless those, unless, unless those items are invoked, there's no jurisdiction for the planning board to hear an application. So in this instance, you've already heard the application for the shopping center. You've approved it. You've outlined the requirements. If a permitted tenant goes to occupy the shopping center and it doesn't change the site plan, and it doesn't invoke any new standards as to the parking, then yes, there's no further relief that's required under municipal land use law. And that, that would be permitted to occupy the shopping center without the planning board having another look at it.
Doesn't the municipal land use law say that it's for the governing body to establish the site plan requirements in their ordinance? And doesn't our ordinance, as cited by Mr. Porczynski, at section 30-4.1, provide that in all zones, for all proposed uses, subdivision, site development, or construction, other than an exempt development, site plan or, and/or subdivision approval shall be required prior to, number one, subdivision of the land. Number two, issuance of a development permit or building permit. Number three, commencement of any regulated use or activity, which includes erection, construction, alteration, repairing, remodeling, conversion, removal, or destruction of any building or structure, the use or occupancy of any building, structure or land, subdivision or re-subdivision, any activity which entails the construction of any improvements or the alteration of the natural condition of the land. So it seems that our ordinance says that you have to get site plan approval unless it meets the, the requirements of an exempt development.
We got site plan approval, Mr. Irene. And the proposal before Mr. Porczynski was for occupancy of internal, internal alterations for tenant fit outs for permitted use. No site plan changes were provided.
Perhaps I went too fast, Mr. Bruno. It says unless it's an exempt development, site plan review is required for, among other things, issuance of a building permit, issuance of a development permit, erection, construction, alteration, repair, modeling, conversion, removal, or destruction of any building or structure, the use or occupancy of any building. That's what the ordinance says. That doesn't mean the applicant has to like it. But if you're not happy with the ordinance, that's really not what's at issue before this board. We don't sit as a super governing body where we can amend the ordinance.
So I think the testimony was that we believe we're an exempt development because of no changes to the site plan. I think the issue that Mr. Porczynski's raised, that the parking is, is a relevant one. That, that would be the one item that he could review when it's, if, if we're below the 25%, then no further action would be required, in my judgment.
Marty, I saw that you had your hand up. Did you have a question or a comment?
I just had a question for Mr. Bruno. If your statement is that basically the use that would go back into the space of Fairhaven Retail, what's to stop that 45,000 square feet of restaurant space, in theory, which if I did the calculations right, would require 675 spaces?
That's exactly right. You're, you're right. If, if you get over the 25% threshold, you need additional parking or you need relief from that requirement. So if, if we were over the 25%, we, we would have to go back to the planning board for relief? If we didn't have enough parking.
And site plan approval, not just, not just variance relief, site plan approval.
I see Mr. Lauffer has a question.
If more parking was, if more parking was being proposed, yes.
Yeah, thank you. I'm troubled by the fact that the applicant seems to continue to substitute the term shopping center for intended use. I don't think that's appropriate in this situation. The applicant also stated that there's no change in the parking requirements. Where according to our code, there is clearly a change in the parking requirements. And I don't think that the substitution of shopping center for intended use is, is realistic or significant in this situation. And I, I just don't think this meets the, or qualifies as an exempt development.
But we will reserve ultimate determination on that until the conclusion of the proceedings.
That's correct. I, but I think the testimony already is that the, the property is, the use of the property is a shopping center. I, I don't, I don't think that's under debate. Your, your, your own zoning officer has testified to that point. The question is, do, do we fall under the exempt development provision? And what we heard this evening is, Mr. Porczynski was not able to make that determination because there were, there was information missing from the application.
Yeah, look, Mr. Bruno, I just feel the need to keep clarifying. You're saying that you heard it this evening. It's in the letter. It says it. We can read it again if you want. And it also invites an amended package. So I, I just want to make sure this is clear. You know, this is a brutal process. Some of the materials and the language, it's a hard job. It's, it's in the letter that it was insufficient.
It's on page two on the, on the next, you know, next to the last paragraph of page two of the denial letter. But. But I just, I just wanted to, to try to clarify. This seems a very, very confusing discussion. When Mr. Poroczewski described the reason for his denial, he's talking about the changing use from a bike store to a restaurant. And I think I keep hearing the applicant say that it's actually a shopping center versus a shopping center. So it seems like we are continuously, at least the way I am interpreting this, having two completely different discussions. I mean, I think, I just, I guess I just need clarification as far as I'm understanding. The borough is looking at each store inside of the shopping center as it's on its own right and as part of the shopping center group. And so we're not ignoring, just looking at the total shopping center as one unit. But I, it just seems like we continuously are crosswiring, going crosswires here. And I just think we need legal clarification from maybe Mr. Irene here on exactly which one is it? And let's stick with it.
Well, and, and, and just by way of an example, maybe I can kind of amplify that because it, I think that may well be the heart of the whole conversation. As, as we indicated before, there is a definition in the borough ordinance of the shopping center and it talks about an integrated development of uses such as retail stores and shops, personal service establishments, business offices, banks, restaurants, and it lists them. But when you look at the table B schedule of permitted uses, as Mr. Graviano indicated in response to one of my prior questions, there is no shopping center use. It is a combination of other permitted uses. So for instance, if one wants to argue that a shopping center is a separate permitted use, then presumably you could stick anything in that shopping center. Now, in our case, one of the things that is not permitted in the B1 zone, and I'm just looking at the schedule here, is an auction market, whatever that may be. If one argues, well, this isn't really an, anything but a shopping center, then presumably that's the use. You could have an auction market there without getting used variance. That is not the case under our ordinances. The only things that can go in that shopping center are one of the permitted uses such as the restaurant in question, such as retail uses, such as a bank. But when you congregate those things on a single site, that development is called a shopping center. But there are component uses that either have to be permitted and if they're not, then you need a use variance.
Mr. Irene, please also.
That makes it very clear. I just want to make sure we stick with that in the, in the conversation with that.
Well, Mr. Irene, could you please summarize Mr. Bruno's argument or Mr. Bruno, if you'd like to do it yourself? Because what Mr. Irene just explained is the way that he reads it. Mr. Bruno's argument is different. And his argument is that this is a use unto itself. And so the difference in the way we're speaking of it is because we have a different perspective in terms of what the ordinances say and mean. Did one of you want to summarize that from his net as to the other side of the argument?
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Irene can make his own argument as to how he believes the, the ordinance reads. Our, our testimony is and our argument is that your planning board has approved this site as a shopping center. You have, you have certain standards, bulk standards that apply to a shopping center that were applied to this shopping center and it's operated as a shopping center historically. The uses that are permitted within the shopping center aren't, aren't open-ended as Mr. Irene suggested. They are as permitted in this particular zone. So although the shopping center is the overall use of the property, you're limited to what you can do within the shopping center as to what the permitted uses are. There's also standards that get applied to the shopping center and Mr. Porczynski had put up the zoning standard, in particular, the parking standard of, of, of one space per 4,000 square feet that gets amended as different uses occupy the center. So as you, as you hit certain standards, the parking requirement could be implicated and could be increased. In that instance, if it was increased beyond what was already approved by your planning board, we acknowledge that additional release may be required in that instance. But we had, we had suggested earlier that the applicant did not believe that it implicated any increased parking obligation. And accordingly, because we already have a site plan approval from your planning board and we're putting in a permitted use and not implicating any other site plan features, it's been our position that no further relief is required.
The only problem with that, Mr. Bruno, is that the exempt development ordinance doesn't say if the applicant believes that it doesn't implicate parking, they're exempt. It says that, among other things, have to be submitted to the demonstration and the satisfaction of the zoning officer. And you may be right. It may, it may not, it may not exceed parking requirements. But, but the problem is for the zoning officer to be able to make that determination, doesn't he need the information on parking? And again, I don't want to imply that that's the only issue. Mr. Porczynski's testimony stands for itself. But doesn't he need to be able to make the determinations that the exempt development provision of the ordinance requires him to make? And he has to essentially check off all those things before he can call it exempt, I would submit.
We, we don't, we don't necessarily disagree with that. And that was the reason for our frustration at the commencement of the meeting that had we known he needed that information, had they historically asked for that and we had some, some acknowledgement that that was required, we would have submitted it. We now know based on this evening's discussions that Mr. Porczynski needs that and we can provide that to him.
So based, based upon that, is there any way for this board to find that he was in error?
I think, I think he was in error. I mean, I think our position is that we're, we're, we're an approved shopping center with a permitted use. We're not implicating the site plan. So accordingly, we believe that we're entitled to the zoning certificate.
Mr. Bruno.
That's our position and that's the testimony we submitted.
Opposite argument. I'm sorry, but that's, you are arguing both ways. I, this is, this is very confusing. You're literally arguing both ways, that it's a shopping center and you have all the rights to put in whoever you like there. And then you are arguing that if you look at it individually, you know, you can determine yourself what the parking requirement is or you expect a Mr. Poroczewski to send you a specific letter that is more specific than the one here. So you're arguing, well, that's, that's my, my first thing I'll say. You are arguing both sides. The second thing I would ask is, did you, did you have a call, Mr. Poroczewski? Did anybody in your, in your group call him to find, to get clarification on the letter? If, if, you know, page two was not as clear for you?
I, I don't know if the property owner had calls with Mr. Porczynski's office. We, we, we received the denial letter from, from our client. We, we did not make the application to Mr. Porczynski. The owner of the shopping center did through the tenant and we just received a denial. So I, I don't know what conversations took place. But clearly there wasn't, there wasn't great communication. It could have been, it could have been better communication so that we knew what, what was required so that he could make a determination.
I, I want to ask a follow-up about the use question and the shopping center being its own use because, and Mr. Bruno, as you explained, your analysis of the ordinance, you're using the shopping center definition and then also using the other permitted use requirements from the ordinance. And it's, it's multi-layered and I'm trying to understand how we can do both. If the shopping center is the permitted use, then it, it would follow that you wouldn't need to be qualified as an exempt development because there is no change of use. So there's no reason to make that argument. We're done at shopping center. And I don't also understand how you could acknowledge that the uses do matter in terms of the analysis. It would seem that that undermines the argument if you see that the other uses are important in terms of the analysis of the other requirements.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't think so. I, I'll let Mr. Graviano respond to that because it's really a planning argument. I think you can, you can certainly have a shopping center as the permitted overall use. And each of your tendencies would then have to be permitted or you'd need relief. And that's simply what we're, we're suggesting. And that's how the shopping center is operated historically. But I'll let Mr. Graviano respond to, to that question because it really is more of a planning response.
You know, I, I think I, I touched on the correlation in my testimony that, you know, if a shopping center wasn't a use in its own right, it, it wouldn't have its own parking standard. So we, we, you know, the, the borough's ordinance does recognize that this is a unique land use. It's a unique land use situation. And the, you know, it has set forth certain requirements such as it has to be in excess of 20,000 square feet. It has a parking ratio of, of four per thousand when, when, when it recognizes that there are going to be mixed users in the shopping center. And that's where 4,000 essentially relaxes some zoning standard.
Ms. Gable, can, can you comment on that? It's my understanding that the reason that we have a shopping center definition is because the grouping of the stores has some synergy and some, some ability to absorb more. And therefore the requirements are different because of the, the nature of the different businesses sharing the same space. Is, do you, do you agree with Mr. Graviano's position? That because we have a definition for parking for shopping centers, that that means that it's its own use?
No, I actually don't agree with that. I think the shopping center, from what it seems like in the ordinance, the shopping center is really just used as a parking requirement. Then the shopping center though also has the footnote about, you know, if you have this much core area of restaurant space, then you need to provide additional parking. I think the whole purpose of having this change of use is to kind of help guide, you know, what goes in and out of each storefront. And that like what you said, Todd, how, you know, the shopping center is the combination of uses that do synergize with one another. But I don't, as the ordinance stands, a shopping center is not a standalone permitted use that lets you have storefronts come in and out as they please.
And that's why the parking requirements are not fixed for the shopping center. Mr. Graviano says a shopping center parking requirements are four per thousand square feet. Well, that's the same as retail. But if you have 50% of the shopping center square footage devoted to restaurant, those changes, those change. If you have more than 25% non-retail, then you got to calculate in the specifics for the restaurants that are more than 25% if there are any, the banks, because those have higher parking requirements than your retail uses. So the parking spaces flex, alter depending upon the nature and scope of the uses that are combined or consolidated within that shopping center.
Mr. Irene, would it be?
I don't think we're disagreeing, I don't think we're disagreeing on that point. I, I, I mean, I, I don't think we're disagreeing on that. I, I think, I think what we're saying is you, you're planning board as a finding of fact in the resolution that we submitted as part of the testimony and we had, we had marked into evidence earlier, found as a finding of fact that that property is an existing shopping center. So, you know, it's, it's relevant from the perspective that that is the use of the property. It's a shopping center. Now you, you, you have changes in the tendencies and those tendencies have to be permitted. And they could invoke, as Mr. Irene has suggested, they could invoke a different parking standard which would then have to be met or relief would have to be granted by your planning board. But this application and the applicant has submitted that this doesn't invoke any item parking requirements and, and no further relief is required. So I understand that Mr. Porczynski didn't have the information to make that determination. And, and again, I wish we had known, we would have supplied that.
Mr. Bruno, if, if the Chase Bank didn't exist on the site and we follow the logic of your argument, that as long as it's a permitted use, no site plan is required, you're suggesting that Chase Bank could install a drive-through without ever submitting that to the planning board? Am I following your logic?
No, I, 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 I didn't suggest that. I wasn't even close to suggesting that. That's a change in the physical site plan. Of course that would require an amendment to the site plan. I'm talking about where there's no physical alteration to the improvements that are at the property. The only change is the interior occupancy of one of the spaces. That's what we're talking about right now. And does that require a planning board approval? The answer is no unless it invokes a different parking standard that is not met at the site.
Are you reading it backwards? The answer is.
Relief would have to be required.
You're reading it backwards, Mr. Bruno. The answer is yes. It requires site plan approval unless the applicant can demonstrate to the satisfaction of the zoning officer that it's an exempt development. And he has to go through and check off those provisions. Start with yes. Everything under the ordinance that we read a moment ago requires site plan approval unless the applicant can demonstrate that it's an exempt development.
Right. I, I hear your argument and we think that's inconsistent with the municipal land use law.
Well, then, then you challenge, but then you challenge the ordinance, Mr. Bruno. You, you, that's a different argument. That's an argument that, that you don't like the ordinance and that's fine. So you can either argue that to the governing body or you can challenge the ordinance in court. You have to name the borough of Fairhaven. That's not an argument to make to this board. The question before this board is, did the zoning officer err when he said it wasn't demonstrated to his satisfaction that this is an exempt development? And he told us, you, everybody on this Zoom proceeding tonight, the materials that were not provided, that he felt were necessary under the ordinance to make the determination. If you agree that at least some of those materials were not presented, then where are we going tonight?
So I, I, I would like to ask Mr. Porczynski some questions in regard to his testimony earlier this evening.
Let's proceed with that. I, I would like to move through the balance, Mr. Bruno, of what you've got. I want to be sure that we get through it and you build the record that you'd like to build. I also recognize that we do have members of the public that have participated and I want to make sure we have time for them as well.
So, so Mr. Porczynski, you, you testified earlier that there was missing information from the, from the zoning permit application. Can you identify for us in particular what, what was missing and what you would have needed to make a determination of whether or not this was an exempt development?
Sure. As, as discussed, one of the, the, the key issues was, would be a parking calculation which, which would identify each of the units, each of the tenants, the square footage of each of those tenants, a description and how the parking rate would have been applied to understand if the threshold, 25% threshold would have been met requiring a higher parking rate for the individual restaurant use or the non-retail use being proposed.
What, what, what other important information would you have required to make a, a determination? Anything?
As discussed in my testimony, one of the other questions or concerns was the rear entrance, the secondary entrance to the rear of the building. As part of the 2017 Fairhaven retail modernization, that whole area was, was redone with a loading area and various different infrastructure improvements. And one of the concerns was if the current or the proposed use was going to use that secondary entrance for its customers. I know a lot of places have multiple entrances. In typical shopping centers or restaurants may have more than one entrance. There was no real additional information provided regarding how that secondary entrance was to be used. It just says a secondary entrance on the floor plan. You know, those are, those are two things off the top of my head that were not provided as well as some of the things previously discussed in my testimony.
So if, if the applicant had provided the parking calculations and demonstrated to you that the 25% threshold had not been met and had the applicant provided the additional information as to the, to the rear entrance that, that it was, was only going to be used in limited circumstances, would you have granted the zoning?
I would have reviewed it, I would have reviewed it for the definition of exempt development and made sure that all the provisions in paragraphs of A to J were, were satisfied.
Well, only the applicable provisions. Certainly, most of those provisions are not applicable to the, the case at hand. It's only, it's only, I think maybe three are implicated. Would you disagree with that?
Well, like one of the things I mentioned was if mechanical or electrical equipment was going to be added as part of the restaurant, the existing use of that retail space was a bicycle shop. Obviously, if there is additional, you know, coolers or refrigeration or HVAC, they needed to have external that needed to have external components associated with it, that would also come into play with respect to the site plan.
But that, that material was submitted with the, with the CD drawings that were provided as part of the application. The tenant fit out drawings. So you had that information.
No, but there was no site plan component associated with that. The site plan component that was submitted was for the Dunkin' Donuts.
So you would need it.
The site plan application that was submitted still had the, the tenant D space located and highlighted as retail and not as the, you know, the new proposed restaurant. So that proposed restaurant obviously, you know, has an exit right into the loading area of the Acme Shopping Center. So for instance, I can share my screen here. I could explain further.
What are you looking for, Nick? Is there any, is that something maybe that Adam can put up or Jen?
No, it's based on, anytime I do a zoning permit application, I do site visits. And as part of the site visits, I was trying to do multiple things here. Not sure why it's not sharing. Can you guys see the pictures or no?
No, we can't see. But I think I understand, I think I understand what you're saying. So, so I've heard that the parking calculations were important to your determination. The, the site plan and the secondary access and how that might operate in conjunction with the, the loading area that was approved as part of the site plan, whether or not there's any mechanical or electrical equipment that would implicate a site plan review. Is, is, is there anything else that would be important in your determination?
Initially, you mentioned when you first went through the testimony, the issue of the employees under G. I'm just looking at my notes.
Right, the, you know, generally speaking, if, if, if an application or proposed application is coming to Fairhaven, we look with, we look at the intensification. If the intensification is pretty much similar to the existing use that's there and it's just a change in tendency, you know, we can move it on to construction. If it has, if it's an intensification of use with regard to number of seats, number of employees, you know, processes or procedures at that location, then it might not classify it exempt development and require further review by the planning board.
Based on intensity alone?
Well, depending on if, you know, if the intensification, in other words, if, if there's a you know, if there's a gas station with one pump and then next, the next change in tendency wants to put in, you know, 10 pumps. You know, that's an intensification of use.
No, I, I, I understand that, I understand that, but I don't think that's what you, what you suggested. I think what we're talking about here is, is an internal space, the same square footage. If, 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 if the space was going to have more employees or be more popular, are you suggesting it has to go in front of the planning board?
Well, G is the item that addresses the employees, so I mean, we should just look at the language of G.
Right, does any increase in the total number of employees, number of employees in any shift or the number of vehicles to park on the site not exceeding 25% of the amount existing at the time of passage of this ordinance or had set forth in a time of previous site plan approval? So none of that information was provided as, as per this new application.
Again, I, I would, I would submit that that would apply to a standalone type of building that's changing a use, but not to a shopping center. But we, we, we can provide the anticipated number of employees if, if that's part of your determination. But I don't, I don't know how that implicates the planning board. If the use is permitted and the parking is adequate, there's nothing else to review.
I, I gotta say, in, in response to the question of what, you know, what this looks like for Nick, that's Nick's, Nick's answer. But look, we're on the record here, we're having a discussion. I think that this ordinance clearly says that the, if the intensification of the parking requirements are there, then you can't be an exempt development. And I know your argument is that a shopping center to a shopping center is the same parking requirement. I don't agree with it. I think that the ordinance itself says something different. But I also think that it implies something that's really the most important piece. And that is that when you look at the parking requirements for the different types of uses, there is a direct correlation with the intensity of the use. When you go from a requirement of four per thousand to 15 per thousand, that says a ton. And while the shopping center may be exempt from having additional spaces, to me, it's, it's in addition to the fact that it's a more intense use. So, you know, we're having, we're having a hearing and talking about it. Nick's going to interpret it his own way. But I just want to say here that to me, that's clear.
So I, I don't think we've argued the point that if you hit the threshold that the parking provisions provide, that your parking standards would change as to that space. We, we haven't argued that point. What we're talking about now is whether or not a change in the number of employees in an existing space, if you've otherwise complied with your site plan and your parking requirements, whether or not that couldn't require you to go to the planning board just because you're more intense. But that in and of itself, in my view, doesn't give, give the planning board jurisdiction.
But, but, but the ordinance language speaks for itself. This is an appeal from a determination of the zoning officer. There is no interpretation before the board. So what's going to happen is if this proceeds to conclusion, the board will determine whether or not the zoning officer erred or not. And if he did, so be it. If he didn't, then the applicant will be left to doing one of two things. Either resubmitting to the zoning officer presumably to see if they can demonstrate what needs to be demonstrated or, or taking it up. But I don't know that the board wants to go through paragraph by paragraph and lend its gloss to what the ordinance language says when that's not what's before the board. There's no interpretation here. This is an appeal from a determination of the zoning officer based upon what was submitted to him.
And I, and I was just asking Mr. Protensky, based on his testimony as to what additional information he would need to, to, to have in order to make a determination. And, and, and that's the exercise we're going through.
Generally speaking, if an applicant is submitting for exempt development, they reiterate the definition, chapter, paragraphs A through J, and they list out how they comply or how they don't comply or what's required. If it's not applicable, they write not applicable. That's generally what I, what we review from the zoning department with regard to exempt development. We ask for a narrative and we ask for paragraphs A through J to, you know, be listed. And then the applicant provides a narrative and details as applicable based on their knowledge of the proposed improvements and their knowledge of what they're proposing to do.
And that was not provided in this instance?
No, nothing was provided in this instance. I, I, in my testimony, I documented what documents were provided. And also outlined in the denial, it, it submits to you what, what was submitted as part of the application.
I think Mr. Bruno indicated earlier that his applicant submitted those materials directly to you, Mr. Protensky, if I'm not mistaken. I'm going to assume if Mr. Bruno or Mr. Garcia were involved, you probably would have had a much more complete submission.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes, I have nothing further from Mr. Protensky. Thank you for responding.
You've had the, the, the board jumping in on you throughout. So I, I think we've had an opportunity to ask our questions. I don't, I don't see any hands raised. Do you have anything further?
Mr. Graviano, have you completed your planning testimony? Was there anything that we, we jumped around and missed? Or did you get the testimony in?
I got the testimony in. I would like to just note one thing, that in the 2019 planning board resolution, it does indicate that the planning board recognizes that there is adequate parking on-site for the shop.
Thank you. We have nothing further, Mr. Leader.
Okay. Are there any board members that have any questions of the applicant or Mr. Graviano before we open to the public? Seeing no hands, we will go to the public. If any members of the public have any comments with regard to the application or any questions with regard to the proceedings, now would be the time. You're going to indicate that you have a question or want to be heard by using the raise your hand feature.
Nobody acknowledged.
Still clear?
Still clear.
Okay. All right, Mr. Bruno, do you have anything in closing?
Yeah, I, I am, you know, I'm, I'm considering how we provide the additional information that Mr. Protensky needs to make his determination. Because at this point, the, the application is, was incomplete for him to make a determination. I mean, that, that's become clear to us this evening. And so we don't even get to the legal arguments, unfortunately, because he, he, he didn't have the information he required to make the determination. And I, and I think if we provide that, I think he would, he would find that the, that the use is permitted and no further relief would be required. So I'm just, I'm, I'm just hesitant for the moment in terms of proceeding. Could, could we, I guess we've got a couple of options. We, we could ask for the board's determination. We could possibly carry this case and give us an opportunity to resubmit the information that Mr. Protensky requires. Or we withdraw the appeal at this point. And I have not had a chance to speak with my client as to how they might want to proceed. So I think what I'd like to do at this point is, is to, is to carry this application and give us time to, to, to speak with our client and maybe get Mr. Protensky the additional information to see if we can get another determination from him. I think that's, I think that's probably the way we'd like to proceed.
Mr. Irene, I'm sure you're headed right where I'm headed. And my question is, if, if the board were to, to proceed with a vote, does anything preclude the applicant from resubmitting completed information for review by Mr. Protensky in the future?
Not, not that I'm aware of, Mr. Chairman. I really haven't thought through it. My thoughts are this, and the board can do what it likes. It, it, it's not, it's not a moving target in terms of the appeal. Mr. Protensky made a determination, the applicant took an appeal from that. So it seems to me there, there aren't three options, there's two. One, the applicant can withdraw the appeal because apparently it's conceded that Mr. Protensky wasn't provided with the information that's required under the ordinance to find that it's an exempt development. So I think they're going to be hard pressed to argue that he was in error. But they can proceed with the appeal or they can withdraw it. If they withdraw it, I'm not sure that there's anything that would preclude them from submitting a new zoning permit application to Mr. Protensky. But I don't know how you, how you do an appeal from something that's already happened and then continue it to try and further supplement the application that was already denied. It would essentially be a new application. New zoning permit application. So I think there's two options. One, submit it to the board for a decision. Or two, withdraw it. If we submit it for a decision, then I've got to do a resolution. I'm not sure which way the board's going to vote. It's entirely up to the board. But there's a cost to that to the applicant appellant as well. So, you know, I don't know, I think it's up to Mr. Bruno. But I, I don't see the third option of continuing it to try and submit additional materials to Mr. Protensky because his determination was based on what was submitted. And the question is whether that, whether that determination was an error or not.
Just to be clear, I was trying to determine out of courtesy whether there was any prejudice to the applicant by taking action. I, I agree with the, the position with regard to, we're supposed to be evaluating what was available in December.
I'm, I'm not aware of any prejudice, Mr. Chairman, because it's, it's not an application for development that would have been not denied. No different than if the board were to ultimately decide that Mr. Protensky was correct. He did not error and the board affirms him. There's nothing that I'm aware of that would preclude the applicant from submitting a new zoning permit with whatever materials they thought were appropriate based upon whatever they were going to do.
Mr. Bruno, do you have any concerns about that? I mean, the way we're understanding where you are right now?
Well, my, my concern is that I haven't had an opportunity to speak with my client about how they would like to proceed. And I'm hesitant to, that was really the primary reason to have this carried. To give me time to, to, to counsel my client as to how the, how the hearing went this evening and what, what his options are so that he can make a determination. And so I'm, I'm wrestling with getting more time to have an opportunity to do that before a formal action is taken, whether that be by way of the board's vote or by way of a withdrawal of the application. And that was the reason I had sought the continuation.
So it sounds, Mr. Chairman, like what Mr. Bruno may be asking for is to essentially close the proceeding, but carry it for the vote only as opposed to try and continue it where we're going to be supplementing materials going forward on a decision that's already been made by the zoning officer. That might be a little bit different request and I'm not sure if the board's inclined to do that. Close the proceeding, carry for the vote. If Mr. Bruno decides he wants to withdraw, in the meantime, fine. If not, then the board would vote on what's been presented tonight.
I think, I think that's accurate. I think that's accurate. That will give me time to speak with our client and get a, and get, be able to talk them about what, what their options are. We could either withdraw it or we could, we could ask the board for a vote at the next meeting.
I'm not sure I understand the reason to do that, but I certainly would like to extend any courtesies that we can. And, and as long as we're closing the testimony tonight and not inviting additional supplemental information to be filed for evaluation, I mean, I certainly, certainly could support that. Mr. Bruno, is that a request that we carry with, with an offer of a stipulation of extension time there?
Yeah, I think, I think we would ask that it be, be carried. I, I would also ask that it not be closed as to additional information because if I do learn of information from our client who wasn't available this evening for this call, I'd like to supplement the record. So I would ask that the board carry this to its next meeting. Give me an opportunity to speak with the applicant, the owner of the center. And we will, we will advise you of how we want to proceed prior to the next public hearing.
Mr. Bruno, I, look, I seriously, I'm sincere. I want to exercise, extend whatever courtesy we can. The, the agenda of this board is, is a concern. And I do not want to invite the applicant to turn over its files and bring in new information next month that it should at every opportunity to bring this month. We've got Mr. Protensky who's a borough employee. It's 10 o'clock at night. He should be wearing a tie, but he's not. You know, it's, it's exhausting. If there's, if there's additional information, help us understand what you think that is. Happy to extend the courtesy of the vote until next time. I don't know, other board members feel differently? I don't know. Other board members feel differently?
Look, when is, when is the next, when is the next board meeting?
Probably the second Thursday in July, fourth, July 4th. Do you have a chance?
July 9th.
July 9th. So, so my request would be to, to carry this, uh, until July 9th. Without further notice. And, and give me the opportunity to speak with our client.
And are you specifically asking that we leave the matter open and be available with, for new evidence?
Yeah, I would, I would like, I would like to leave the matter open. I don't necessarily have any indication that I would be supplementing the record, but I, I would like to leave that open for that possibility. Based on Mr. Portinski's testimony this evening, I, I don't know what was provided that I could supplement, but I want to leave that opportunity. I don't want to preclude the ability to do that, uh, if, if, if something relevant comes up.
Okay, that's the request. Discussion? Unmute, please.
Well, I don't like the idea of keeping this open-ended to have another whole meeting of new testimony and going over it again, but in light of the fact that the applicant himself is not here and we want to extend courtesy, I don't know what, you know, what, what else can we do? Do you want to force a vote? Fine. But I, I don't think that's fair to all parties, unfortunately. Look, I would, I would ask that, that we limit, Mr. Bruno, limit any new information to, to, to only what's immediately pertinent that can be, you know, used. I don't want to go through a whole, uh, presentation of the, of the case all over again, to be honest.
Mr. Bruno?
No, the intent is not to, the intent is not to retestify and supplement what you heard this evening. This, this would be, if there's something relevant that I'm, I, I, I become aware of as a result of learning, uh, of, of understanding Mr. Portinski's testimony this evening, will be limited to that. And I, I don't know if there is or not. Uh, I just don't want to preclude that, that possibility.
Look, I, I would submit to the board that Mr. Portinski wrote in his letter in December that he didn't have the information that he needed to qualify this as an exempt development and included a specific notation that the application could be supplemented. Even if the applicant were to walk in here or whatever we're doing next month and show a whole bunch of information, you know, that Nick missed, it wouldn't matter. He communicated that he didn't have it. He said tonight that he didn't see it. And this is taxing. Um, I do not think that we should carry the, the hearing to take more testimony potentially in July.
Yeah, Todd, I would agree. Wouldn't, wouldn't we want to go back to Nick and get clarity and um, answer next questions, yes or no, and go from there? Why would we want to? Now that it's clear, the appellate's that there was information that Nick didn't have, get the information to Nick and let's go from there?
By the way, that's really important, right? They still have the ability to do that. We don't need to be doing this before the zoning. Of course, what you just said is the reason that it doesn't make sense to hold it open. So.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with what, um, Mr. Leader said. Um, I, I think Mr. Bruno's being a good advocate for his client. And I appreciate you don't want to foreclose the possibility of additional testimony, but I think you've had plenty of time and, and your client was put on notice that information was missing. And so um, I don't think we should hear further testimony next month.
Anybody else have an opinion?
I would just agree to carry it for the vote only and close the proceedings today.
And I, I would hope that upon Mr. Bruno speaking with his client, that he would, uh, there would be no necessity for new testimony, to be honest with you, that they could provide the information to Mr. Portinski. And we wouldn't have to have further discussion on it. But that's the ideal situation, to be honest.
I, I guess I would just say that it seems to me that the question that was raised here was an appeal of whether Mr. Portinski made the right decision or not. I cannot imagine any other new testimony, new relevant testimony that would be substantially different than was, what was presented today. I, I would suggest we just carry the vote. I cannot imagine what else could be presented on the, on specifically just the issue where Mr. Portinski made, made the wrong decision.
I'm, I'm okay with carrying the vote. Um, you know, as long as we don't have to rehash the, uh, the testimony. I, I think the question before us tonight was whether or not Mr. Portinski erred in his decision. And, uh, clearly based on the information that we have tonight, we don't believe that he has.
Well, we haven't, we haven't voted yet, but Mr. Lauffer has certainly indicated which way he's leaning.
You're right.
Anyone else with either another comment or a motion?
I'll make a motion to carry the vote with no further testimony to the July 9th meeting.
So to close out the testimony, to extend the, um, the vote until next month, conditioned on a stipulation of an extension of time to act from the applicant.
Yeah, without requirement of notice.
I'll second it.
Okay. Mr. Nachesny?
Yes.
Ms. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Ludman?
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Leader?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bruno, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, uh, Mr. Nachesny, you want to, uh, address those minutes?
Yes, only one, uh, one administrative item approval of the minutes of the May 7th, 2020 meeting. I have no, uh, adjustments to make. Jen, I don't know if you got any adjustments from anybody else?
Hold on a second. Hey, Nick, go put some kid bed. Thank you. You don't need to hang a hunt. Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. If nobody has any amendments, I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the, of the May 7th meeting.
Mr. Nachesny?
Yes.
Ms. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Ludman?
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Leader?
Yeah.
Anybody have any reasoning why we might want to go to executive session? I do not.
No. No, but Mr. Irene, I have a question for you. The applicant before us tonight had an app, has an application pending before the planning board. They essentially have a site plan application pending in the alternative. Is it safe to assume that since the vote was carried, that the application before the planning board is, is moot? Scheduled for this month?
That's something that will have to be taken up with planning board council.
Come on, Mike.
That's something that'll have to be taken up with planning board council.
All right. So we'll have to reach out to Bruno on the side and confirm, um, that that's what's happening. I, I ask because we do have a lot of pressing matters and we can't have, um, something sitting on our agenda that isn't going to happen.
And that's not pending before this board, so we really don't want a discussion.
Anybody have anything further? I just want to thank Jen and Joe. Um, I think you did a great job tonight. I think that the materials went up. I think we're able to get through this. I didn't understand how it was going to work, but I think this was really great. Really, really well done.
Yeah, I think you went pretty good.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Jen. Jen, thanks for all your, all your help with this.
No problem. I couldn't do it without Joe. I promise you that.
Thanks, Joe.
Looks like Joe went to sleep.
All right, everybody. Need a motion to close?
Motion to adjourn.
Now, do you have a parking lot? Anybody? Take care, everybody.
Night. Take care.
Cheers.